Call to order, back to open session. Roll call, please. I mean, no roll call, um, pledge of, oh, shoot, hold on. We are all, we're on the next page. I try, so may, okay, but we did call to order, Pledge of Allegiance, ma'am. Everyone, please stand. I'm gonna get it right for us this day.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Broadcast statement.
This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded and will be cablecast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will be aired Sunday, March 10th at 9:00 a.m. and Monday, March 11th at 12:00 p.m. It is also webcast at metro14live.zaccounty.net and can be viewed on Metro Cable 14's YouTube channel. We welcome members of the audience to address the board. Please complete a speaker form which are located in the back of the room and give them to our communications representative along with any handouts you may have for the board prior to the conclusion of the item's presentation. Please speak into the microphone when addressing the board and state your name for the record. Please limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is listed on the agenda, we will ask that you please defer your comments until your item comes up on the agenda. Please also either turn off your cellphones or place them on silent mode.
Thank you, Member Segura. Stellar student this evening, introduced by Board Member Jasjit Singh.
Sir?
Thank you. All right, uh, can we have the Miwok Middle School Okidokis come up? All right, so, uh, we're honoring the Okidokis tonight. So the Miwok Middle School Okidokis is an extracurricular ensemble directed by our amazing district music teacher, Patricia Wasson. Perfect. They volunteer to meet after school one day a week on Fridays to broaden their musical horizons and challenge their musical experiences by venturing into the incredible genre of traditional jazz music. All of these talented and hardworking musicians are part of the Miwok Middle School Music Program in their first or second year, playing music together. All of the musicians, except for one, are new members of the Okidokis. They gave themselves the band name the Okidokis as a fun play on words on the new Miwok mascot, the mighty oak tree. The Okidokis made their debut performance at the Tea Garden Jazz Festival at Sac State last month and won the middle school division and were invited back for an encore performance at the evening awards ceremony. So I will, uh, name the band and, uh, apologies if I have mispronounced your name, but we have, uh, Sienna Payne at trumpet. Uh, Leila Sasaki also at trumpet. Juliana Balistereri at the clarinet. Uh, Bari Eisenberg on the saxophone. Hannah Harper on the tuba. EJ Edwards? Is that right? EJ, okay, my bad. I tried. Martin Fletcher on the drums. Liliana Jacobs on the banjo. And Sidney Manrix on the piano. Congratulations, um, would you all like to say some words? If so, you can press the little red button and let us know how you feel. Is it red? Is it lit up? Thank Ms. Wasson and the board.
Ms. Wasson, we'd love to hear from you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for inviting us here for this extra special presentation to honor my students. And I just want to emphasize again, and I want to thank them, because as you mentioned earlier, they devote, they delay the start of their weekend to have rehearsals on Fridays after school as a volunteer ensemble so they could have, take part in this experience. And I just think that is a really amazing thing for a group of middle schoolers who normally can't wait to go home Fridays at the end of the school day. And I just want to thank all the board members, Superintendent Allen, all the assistant superintendents here tonight, and our principal at Miwok Middle School, Ms. Kristin Tahara, for supporting programs like this, because we may be small, but we are very mighty, and we are changing kids' lives through music. So thank you very much for this recognition.
That is awesome. So don't sit down, we're gonna take a fantastic picture. So spin around, we're coming down.
Also, Miwok just got California Distinguished Schools, so shout out to Miwok.
Shout out to yourself!
Shout out to you. You got a jazz hand here.
I had one.
Yeah, yeah, I had one behind his head.
I had like a bat toupee, like.
So, welcome back. And, um, item five, announcement of action taken in closed session.
Good evening, President Phillips. There are three announcements coming out of closed session this evening. First, the board approved two settlement agreements, each related to special education services, and each by a vote of six to zero with member Jean absent. Uh, the remaining two announcements will come both from yourself and interim Superintendent Allen.
Thank you, Ann. I am pleased to announce that the board approved the following appointment. By a vote of six to zero, the board mem, with board member Jean absent, the board approved the appointment of Christopher Ralston as Assistant Superintendent, Facilities Support Services. Congratulations, Chris.
Previously, the board interviewed superintendent search firms, but did not approve a contract with any of the firms. While initially, the board considered hiring a search firm to recruit outside candidates, the board has also remained open to hiring from within the organization. Interim Superintendent Allen has served in this role since July, managing effective labor negotiations, hiring dynamic and representative staff, and supporting us as a board. Given the good work of both interim Superintendent Allen and interim Deputy Superintendent Harden Young in their respective roles, the board is encouraged and confident that they have the capacity to lead the district and has directed legal counsel to discuss possible contract terms for the permanent positions of superintendent and deputy superintendent. Any appointments or approval of contracts for the superintendent and deputy superintendent positions will take place at a further future meeting. Thank you.
And onward. Item six, agenda adoption. Roll call? Were we roll calling that? All in favor? All in favor? Aye. Item seven, public comment. Um, any public comment, sorry, public comment?
We do.
We have, uh, approximately eight speakers. Uh, first is Eliah Bassin, followed by Rena Bassin, and then James Barnes.
Mr. Bassin, welcome.
Uh, thank you very much, and congratulations on the superintendent news. I'm, uh, really excited to, uh, hear that. Good evening, and thank you for taking the public comments tonight. Uh, my name is Eliah Bassin, I'm a parent in the district. Uh, I submitted earlier this week ed code 35160.5. Our district taught me this code recently. I was surprised to learn, in 1994, it seems, that the state foresaw discriminatory enrollment barriers and created this law stating, "The way excess enrollment requests can be filtered is by a random unbiased process that prohibits an evaluation of whether a pupil should be enrolled based upon the pupil's academic performance." Uh, requiring a meeting, requiring an interest form, uh, requiring a four-year-old to take an exam are all not random or unbiased. Um, so we can forget the charts that I brought a month or so ago and any arguments about discrimination or segregation, because it seems that it's in this law in one sentence. If any registered student is eliminated from the lottery next week, I think we are all knowingly breaking the state law and are culprits as part of that. I will note, um, I put my kid into open enrollment this year for the first time, going through the online process. It took me five hours to figure out how to do it and to do the right process and to get the right codes and everything else. I could say a lot more about, um, what that took, but in the interest of all of our time, I'll just state simply that just registering into the lottery is enough of an enrollment burden, and adding the site's specific requirements, I think, is criminal. If you'd like a 10-minute agenda item, I'd be happy to present how it took me five hours to figure out the enrollment process. Um, I have one other quick note, which is going to go over my time, but I want to say, um, we all have these rules on the procedures and our expectations of communication, and I think the district is not following some of those rules. I'm gonna list it out right here, and that's why I'm going over the time as a slight protest. Today, the board is approving minutes from January 18th and February 1st, but the January 7th minutes are not yet posted on the website. Uh, that's almost two months ago, so that seems not fair to, uh, the public. And the district PRA team has not responded to two public records requests for over 22 school days. That's in violation of state law, and again, I don't think it's, um, being fair to all of us when we're all trying to do, um, proper communication procedures. I'll leave it at that. Uh, next comment is student Rena Bassin, and she has a short statement to make.
I like having a school with a variety of cultures.
Hello. Uh, my name is James Barnes, and my wife and I have a first grader at Crocker Riverside. I heard the district is starting to, uh, to do a work group to develop solutions that stop our open enrollment policies and concapping from negatively impacting our students and students of color the most. As a parent of a student at Crocker Riverside, one of the elementary schools with the highest percentage of white students, I know my son is most, much less likely to be impacted by concapping than children of other schools. I understand that one solution that has been proposed is to create sister schools where two elementary schools are paired together, that way each school is able to offer more classrooms in each grade and reduce the chance that any one school runs out of seats in a specific grade. In our neighborhood, Crocker Riverside is about a mile away from Leah Tata Floyd Elementary, and I would support having those two schools be paired as sister schools. Any elementary school that are close to each other, being paired would reduce the chance that any one student would be subject to concapping. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Next is Grace Faavessi, followed by Amber Stott, Jake Ice, and then Evelyn Morales.
Floor is yours. Can we, um, get our time? Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so very much for allowing me to speak tonight. Um, there was supposed to be a group of us, and we're supposed to be commenting on the, um, sexual misconduct insurance increase for supplemental providers. I'm not exactly sure who else is here, but I will go ahead and, and say my piece. Uh, first of all, thank you so very much for allowing me this time to speak. My name is Grace Faavessi, and I am the co-founder and program manager for Epic Bloom, also known as Bloom Leadership. We have had the honor of being a community partner with the district for the past 10 years. Over the last decade, we have been able to provide support for countless Native Hawaiian and other Pacific Islander students and their families through leadership development, personal enrichment, parent engagement, cultural engagement, community building, and so much more. And we are at several different high schools, including Luther Burbank High School, Arthur A. Benjamin Health Professions, John F. Kennedy, and Hiram Johnson. Uh, we've partnered with Sacramento City College to create a pathway to college for our Native Hawaiian and Pacific Island students. We have led workshops at the annual Girl Inspired Conference. We've hosted annual Warrior on the Rise High School Conferences, reaching 200-plus students annually, as well as led healing circles during the annual youth development August Summit, serving our after-school providers. We have met so many incredible people and have formed lifelong friendships. We started as a small team of two and have since grew into a strong team of seven. The requirement of the sexual misconduct insurance, as we know, is important. Acquiring a $1 million coverage costs us close to $7,000. And if the $3 million coverage, um, becomes mandatory, it would cost us close to $20,000 for a small organization as we are. That is close to a third of our entire yearly contract, forcing us to no longer serve many of our students. Okay. Decreasing our reach to this very vulnerable population and letting go of staff who play a vital role in supporting our young people. My plea with you today is to please take into consideration the negative impact that will be felt throughout our community if the sexual misconduct insurance coverage is increased. Thank you so very much for your time, and I'm here to do the hard work. I'm in it for the long run. We've been here 10 years, and we would love to continue the work that we do here. So thank you so very much for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, most of you already know me and know our nonprofit, Food Literacy Center. I am the founder and CEO, Amber Stott. Um, our nonprofit's mission is to inspire kids to eat their vegetables, and we have enjoyed a long and meaningful relationship with the district. Our most recent accomplishment together was the creation of Floyd Farms, uh, which we opened at the start of the 2022-23 school year. Uh, prior to that, and still, our main contribution to the school district is our work in after-school programs, where we reach 15 elementary schools that are Title I, teaching our hands-on cooking and nutrition programs. We are currently the number one most requested after-school program in the district. Uh, we're a hit with students, with teachers, parents, and principals, because our program works. Uh, we're helping kids develop healthy habits and changing their attitudes toward healthy food. And we have been doing this important work in this district since 2012, and we love it. Uh, but I'm here tonight because there's a technical matter that I'm hoping the school board can help me with before it becomes a problem. The school district recently required after-school partners to carry sexual assault and misconduct insurance. That idea is valid, and we support it. Uh, the requirement, however, was a challenge to fill. Food Literacy Center had to change insurance providers to meet this need. We were able to find only one provider offering this policy at that level. So it was a massive amount of work, but we did do it. Um, and here's where I need your help. There's a new problem, and that's that the district's risk management department wants to increase the required coverage per occurrence from $1 million to $3 million, and this isn't possible for us, um, as you'll hear from our insurance broker who has joined us here tonight. Um, no insurance company will grant us this amount of coverage. Our current provider offers only a maximum of a million-dollar coverage. So we simply can't get a $3 million per occurrence policy, um, and we've tried repeatedly. So we hope that the school district will consider making its after-school provider requirements align with the realities of our nonprofit's size. Um, over the years, our nonprofit has provided over $4 million in free services to the students in the district. We receive no compensation for the daily programs that we provide at Leah Tata Floyd Elementary, um, to the students and their families. Uh, and until last year, all of our after-school programs were also free to the district. So we hope that you'll continue to expand, uh, these programs with us and hope that you'll consider, um, keeping this, uh, insurance requirement at a million dollars. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jake Ice. I am the principal agent of the ICE Insurance Agency. Uh, we're a local agency that's been around for 20 years, been in the business total for 36. Uh, my agency works with several social and nonprofit institutions who provide services to various school districts. My agency is also known for the ability to source insurance for harder-to-place risks, including gold mines in Placer County, um, a dairy farm that's closed due to a rare strain of bovine tuberculosis, et cetera. The vendors of school districts purchase insurance packages so that they can participate with the school districts. Uh, and those may represent social services, healthcare, nonprofits, transportation, uh, and other support services. These packages are traditionally offered by admitted insurers, which are typically contractually required by school districts versus the non-admitted surplus lines carriers, and will provide the general provisions, a million dollars, $3 million, et cetera, but the SAM coverage is typically a sublimite. Hundred thousand dollars, $250,000, and at the most, a million dollars. Um, just depending on the insurer's filed product with the state of, uh, the commissioner's office. For context, only one of our carriers, and we search them out regularly, provide a million dollars. We don't have a carrier, an admitted carrier, that provides anything higher than that. The standalone policies are not a commonplace vent for vendors that serve the school districts from our experience. Also, adding a standalone policy, which, where the same, the same coverage element already exists on the vendor's policy, even if it's at a lower limit, creates a conflict and could result in either, uh, arguments over who's primary, who's excess, or whether or not the conflict creates a non-insurable situation. Uh, we should also mention that, uh, from our research, SAM-related claims are more often perpetrated by, unfortunately, employees or students of educational institutions, not the vendors. And so, um, requiring that they carry that is a, any notion that they carry that, uh, that it will somehow further insulate the district is, seems to be misplaced and ill-conceived. Finally, requesting vendors to increase their SAM limits, especially for those social services and nonprofit organizations, which tend to operate on smaller budgets, will increase the cost of doing business, potentially rendering the prospect of doing business cost prohibitive. As a result, vendors may be forced to pass along the higher cost to the school districts, who may or may not be amenable, uh, or worse, abandon their work because they cannot secure the higher limits or because of the higher cost of doing business. Ultimately, enacting a requirement to carry $3 million in coverage may result in the degradation rather than improvement of services, both to the school district and the students that they are charged with protecting. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Good evening, members of the school board. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Evelyn Morales. I'm the program director at Food Literacy Center. Food Literacy Center has been providing after-school enrichment programs to the school district for 12 years. Um, the popularity and demand for our programs increases every year, and last year, we served 14,000 students at 14 Title I elementary schools. Food literacy programs teach healthy habits by providing hands-on nutrition education and cooking education while building confidence and building resilience in our students who are experiencing high levels of toxic stress. Last year, 93% of our students were brave and became food adventurers by trying a new fruit or vegetable each week. At Bret Hart Elementary, a parent recently reported that their students now chop and eat more veggies at home since the program began, began just this past January. Our impact goes far beyond the school walls, and this year alone, Food Literacy Center has sent home 6,000 pounds of food, breaking down barriers many families face to create healthy meals at home. As a result, parents ask for food literacy programs by name. The, in, plan to increase SAM insurance requirements for after-school supplemental providers to $3 million per occurrence would create a barrier for Food Literacy Center and other nonprofits to serve this community. This would mean taking away vital programs and services from those who need it the most, our students and our families. Thank you so much.
Next speaker is Zachary Weston.
Hello, everybody.
Your floor is yours.
Okay. Uh, hello, my name is Zachary Weston, and I'm a parent of a sixth-grade Hollywood Park Elementary School student. It's a sad reflection on today's society that when people see a person in distress, having an emergency, or in the need of help, would choose to not get involved and would rather either walk away or sit on the sidelines and film it with their phones. Recently, my daughter Eva had a friend who felt like she was being singled out in punishment by her teacher, and after being held in after school, came to Eva in distress, came in tears. She confided to Eva that she wasn't being heard by the teacher and that she was afraid to come back to school because the teacher kept getting her in trouble for things that weren't her fault. Eva could see that her friend was in pain, and because she had never seen her friend upset before, this upset before, was immediately afraid that her friend might do something dramatic. Eva, who's only 11 years old, could have very easily chosen to do nothing. Instead, she did the only thing she could think of, which was go on the school computer and submit an anonymous concern-for-self-or-others report on the district's catapult portal in order to get help for her friend. Instead of being praised or caring and talking, taking this action, Eva was suspended for misuse of district technology. I don't know about you, but I consider the possibility of helping a student in pain and possibly saving a life one of the best uses of district technology. However, the principal saw it differently. Rather than helping the student, she decided to protect the teacher and use district resources to find out who submitted the anonymous report. The principal then proceeded to call in Eva's classmates to, quote-unquote, "investigate." I wish I could tell you what the principal was investigating, but when I asked the principal point-blank, she refused to answer. However, this investigation caused even further embarrassment and trauma to both Eva and her already traumatized friend. The principal's actions sent out a message that if you report something, even anonymously, the district can trace it back to you, and you could be punished for it. Is this the message the district wants to send to our students, parents, and community? That if you see something, that you should turn around, walk away, and not get involved? Even after all this, Eva came to me and said, despite the suspension and all the trauma caused by this, she would do it all again because it was the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
No more speakers.
Thank you. Um, item eight, communications. Did we have an additional speaker who might be wanting to speak? Did you hand a card up to the front?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, I've never been at, um, in-person at a meeting before, but I'm here representing SAC Connect. My name is Kayla Green, and I just wanted to add, too, everyone else already spoke, and they pretty much said what needed to be said, but I wanted to add that, um, SAC Connect is a mental health and wellness organization, and we service three schools currently in the district, and we offer different services in order to support young people and young adults, develop their mental health and wellness, um, strategy, skills, and coping mechanisms, in order to be more successful adults who can, uh, who can address adversity, um, you know, that they are gonna deal with in their lives. So it just does not, you know, make sense for nonprofits to have to pay tens of thousands of dollars for insurances, especially when the proof shows that the problems are not with the vendors, it's with your employees. And so just... And so just please keep that in mind so that we can continue to service our youth because these services are not given in many of the schools in the district. So the vendors are necessary in order to fill those gaps. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further public comment, we're going to move on to item eight, communications. Eight point one, Employee Organization Reports, S C T A. All yours.
Good evening, Board President Phillips, Superintendent Allen, and members of the board. You know, we urge you tonight to accept the agreement and approve it. With that approval tonight, this is really the first time in recent memory that we will actually have an agreement in the same year that we were supposed to have the agreement made. This gives us the time and the energy and the momentum to move forward, and we have a lot of work ahead of us to do together. We have to implement these agreements that bring more supports for our students and reduce class sizes. We have, and we're, you know, we're off to a good start. We have energy to do that now. The Community Schools Committee, District Committee, has met and is working. We have the M T S S design team is meeting later this month for its first meeting, is off to a good start. We need to put a lot of energy to the C D E waiver. We met with the C D E the day before yesterday with the district team, and we have a lot of work to be done. And I know that board's members will be supportive of that work, and that needs to get done very quickly so that we can get the money back and focus those on our students. Recruitment is also off to a great start. We had a recruitment event last week where 75 new educators were offered conditional contracts. These were in many areas of credentials that we need desperately for our students. Will be amazing to start the school year with our classrooms full of credential teachers and with support staff. We want to thank Tiffany Smith Simmons and staff and teachers and admins that helped make that event successful. Thank you Lisa for pitch hitting when there were, when we needed some more people. Man, Lisa, our superintendent Lisa ran up and got more staff to help us. Thank you so much. And that leads me to this new announcement tonight regarding the continuation of leadership that knows and cares about this district, that I and the teachers and educators that I represent love, and it makes a big difference to have leaders that love this district the way that educators do. So we feel that that will help continue this momentum that we've experienced in the last eight months, and we hope that we can continue to work together to achieve the many things that we want to see happen here for our students. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, S E I U. T C S. Teamsters. U P E. Moving on, item eight point two, District Advisory Committees. Student Advisory Council. Community Advisory Committee, C A C. D L A C, District English Learner Advisory Committee. L C A P, Local Control Accountability Plan. Parent Advisory. B triple A B. Black African-American Advisory Board. Mr. Gladney. Floor's yours, sir.
I don't know what you guys are talking about. Last time I didn't. Cool. Good evening, everybody, and congratulations, Dr. Allen. Like, yeah, that's beautiful news, you know, especially in Women's History Month, you know, coming out of Black History Month. You know, what a beautiful foundation for this evening and the rest of this month and the remainder of the school year. So thank you. I've always, you know, been a fan of yours, and you've always had an even tone, and I feel honored to be able to say this now publicly, what I've told you privately because of the news that President Phillips shared. So thank you, and I'm hopeful, I'm optimistic. And not only for that, but also through your work and your service with B triple A B, you know, as well as Vincent Harris. And I stand here tonight, last night, we had the honor and privilege of approving seven new members. And I'll start by acknowledging our new student member, who is Kamora Morley, who is a senior, and she also serves, obviously, on the Student Advisory Committee. We understand the urgency by which we must act to honor her service in these last two months. If we're lucky enough and blessed enough to have her stay connected to this space, we'll do right by her on behalf of you and all the students in our district. We also have six other members, including a grandparent, and many talented, experienced, valuable individuals that really align with our recommendations and fill gaps in service and our organization that we hope to leverage and really, again, honor their time and commitment as we all have done over the past few years, standing on the shoulders of those that served in the African-American Task Force and so many more that came before us. With that being said, on the heels of the Black History Month resolution from last month, we hope to partner further with the district and include staff in our space to figure out how to best work together to get the remaining recommendations implemented wholeheartedly, but also to maintain relevance of the recommendations for whatever climate exists in the day that we, that we exist in. So we look forward to doing that. We will have a welcoming event for our new members that'll be here at Cerner. We're working in partnership with our liaison, Daniel Rallery, to introduce them not only to our organization, but also to this space that often is so foreign to so many, as you guys have heard from some of the people who've come up to this podium. We want to make this space approachable not only for our work, but also for the collective district work that needs to be done on behalf of our Black students. Because if we serve and honor and achieve on behalf of our Black students, we know that the outcomes for the district will be better. We're really excited, and I'm really looking forward to taking this wonderful news back to our body because we consider you family. You're part of the B triple A B, just as the rest of the board is, and we're honored to work and continue and build our relationship with our two board liaisons as well. So thank you all, and yeah, just thank you, I'm excited. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Gladney. Up, Community Schools Advisory Committee. Welcome. Mike Shores.
Good evening. Point of personal privilege first, nothing made me happier than finding out that we are potentially eliminating the interim label from Superintendent Allen, which I have refused to say the word interim from the beginning. So glad to know we might be actually convincing both her and Dr. and Mary Hardin Young to stay with and officially remove the interim tag that I have refused to say from the beginning. So hopefully, we're good there. Terms of Community Schools, so progress we have made. So we're slowly but surely making progress. Last night, we draft, we came up with draft bylaws, and so we will be finalizing that and voting on that. So we're ready and rolling. With that, for the next meeting, we have elected a secretary. Melanie Bean has agreed, so we'll actually have minutes and be able to publish those and get started business. And then finally, on Tuesday, we have interviews for the district community schools training specialists. So hopefully, by the end of next week, we'll have that in place as well. And then we can move forward getting the 18 school principals and site reps trained and so we can get going on, hopefully by the end of the year, hiring the site community schools training specialists. So we are slowly but surely moving forward, and the work is hard, but it is good work, and we're looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Native American Parent Committee. Welcome. Mike Shores.
Majixis, that's a greeting in the Mewoc language. Greetings, American Indian Education Program Parent Committee. That's some of us here tonight. Thank you guys for the invitation. I am Susan Morley. I'm the chairperson of the parent committee. A little bit about the American Indian Education Program. I won't go through all of this that you're reading. You do have it in your hand. The purpose of the Title VI Indian Education Formula Grant is the federal government's unique and continuing trust relationship with the responsibility to the American Indian Alaska Native for the educational needs of American Indian children. Down below, services provided, they are listed with the highlighted cultural education, summer programs, and classroom educators. We bring to you tonight a concern, which is the requirement of the general liability and SAM insurance. We're a small group. We utilize our native community to provide much-needed cultural activities and education. These educators are often from rural areas and at times are our elders. They're willing to share their knowledge of cultural traditions, songs, stories, language, and art. The new requirements have stalled our ability to move forward with the programs and activities we provide. Obtaining insurance and meeting these new requirements, in most cases, are not feasible for our community members. If this program can no longer make possible the culturally-related and relevant activities in education, our students have lost a valuable resource. And quoting there from the Office of Indian Education, "Fund support such activities as culturally-responsive after-school programs, native language classes, early childhood education, wellness, career college awareness, improving attendance, graduation rates, to our, our cultural workshops, and dropout prevention." Want to state that the data shows that our students have lower graduation rates, higher suspension rates, and higher suicide rates than any demographic. This program is necessary and vital. Our culture is our prevention. We know youth development is looking into the idea of a fiscal sponsorship, but they do not have the definite answer yet from partners. I'll add, we are a unique committee. We're volunteer parents and caregivers. We're created with accountability in mind to ensure the federal government and the school district's commitment to our Indian students is carried out. This committee and program is made up of amazing parents and caregivers and our equally amazing Indian students. We ask the board to help us in finding a solution that will prevent us not using our elders, not using our song carriers, our tradition, you know, people that are carrying on our traditions. Lastly, we would like to invite the board and anybody in the public to Mewoc Middle School for our youth's mural unveiling Saturday, March 30th at 10:00 a.m. Our own native youth are creating a mural on there. It's going to be amazing. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you. Item nine point zero nine one, Actualizing English Learner Reclassification: Success and Opportunities for Emergent Bilingual Students in S U S D. Dr. Olga Sims, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Phillips, Superintendent Allen, and members of the board. Today, we are here to bring to you this presentation in order to follow up with our reclassification of English learners. And the title says it all. We're actualizing English learner reclassification so that we can bring success and opportunities for our students. And today with me, I have two staff members. Well, I had two staff members. They probably said, okay, we're out of here. We have Dr. Kribicek, and we also have Colee. Oh, there he is. Come on up here. Come on, Cole. I want to make sure that, you know, our team members are acknowledged. We spend a lot of time working together, collaborating with other departments within our department to make sure that we're serving our English learners. Based on the, on our core value and guiding principle, we're working together to ensure that the systems that we have currently improve. We already know that we don't have a system that's in place that is favorable to the outcomes that we want for English learners. So what we're trying to do is to interrupt those systems, but not in a way that we're being disruptive to the system, but that we're being collaborative, supportive, and inviting to everyone so that we all work together in that, in that vein, to support our students. So our presentation outline is pretty general, but you will see that when we get into our case stories, that will bring an opportunity for us to dive in to understand that within our English learner or emergent bilingual student community, we serve a diverse group. And so I can't wait for the questions because through your questions, that will also bring more opportunities for us to continue to serve our students. You've seen this slide before. We were focusing on E L A C, if you recall. Today, we're really focusing on increasing reclassification and what we do on a day-to-day basis to ensure that our students have the services, have access to programs, parents understand what the reclassification process looks like, staff, principals, multilingual partners, as well as other departments understand what their involvement and responsibility is to English learners. What you see here is a current, a current download from Infinite Campus to show the number of students that we're currently serving in K six, in seven, eight, and in nine twelve. In the future, you will also see data for TK and preschool. Here, we are also paying very close attention to students that have, that are duly identified. And what does that mean? That means that these are students that have an active I E P and are also English learners. So this is the breakdown by segment. We serve over 40 different languages, actually 47 to be exact, but what we show here are the top languages that we serve and a comparison in the last five years. As you can see, our language diversity is huge within our emergent bilingual student community. When we look at reclassification, we look at the L P A C, the Summit of L P A C assessment to determine which students are ready for reclassification. So when we're looking at the regular pathway, we're looking at Level Four students. When we look at the alternate L P A C, we're looking at Level Threes that are ready for reclassification. And then we also look at students that are, that have disabilities that perhaps are not doing well even with this test. And so we have to look to see what other ways can we support them to be able to reclassify? And why is reclassification important? Because when a student reclassifies and we're able to reclassify them in the elementary school years, the student has access to programming in their master schedule that allows them to have access to other opportunities like enrichment programs, C T E pathways, opportunities to take courses concurrently with colleges and community, I mean, colleges and universities. We want our students to have access to higher education and opportunities for careers. That we, when we go back to the guiding principle and to our core value, that's exactly what we're seeking. So this just gives you an overview of Level One students for, for the Summit of, the most recent Summit of L P A C, which tests students or tested students from February to, through May of 2003, sorry, 2023. And so these are the students. This is what we see in Infinite Campus as well as what you will see if you downloaded information from Data Quest from C D E. Our students are also served in various models. We have our structured English immersion. That's really a regular classroom environment that's not inclusive of a dual-language immersion or a transitional bilingual program. Teachers serve the students in various ways. One way is through a push-in model where they are able to provide E L D-designated instruction within their school, within that classroom environment. In other settings, we do pull-out for E L D-designated. And then in other models, they have a protected time, and we see a school-wide intervention at that time. These are, just to name them out, these are the, the schools that we have that are dual-language immersion and our transitional bilingual model, for your information. Moving into the academic components as to the, the big view or the big picture Moving into the academic components as to the big view or the big picture as to another area or criteria that we look at is performance data. And so when you see here, we see all ELs as the most recent CASP and per the CDE dashboard, we see that only 10% are meeting ELA standards. And we also see 9.54 or 9% that are meeting mathematics. Those are very low, very low rates for our students. This is why it is so important that we really hone in on the academic supports that we need to provide for our students as well as continuing to improve the way we're engaging with our families. Per our last conversation, we talked about the importance of engaging parents. This goes hand in hand. Engaging parents and supporting them to understand these outcomes is super important for every single family member that is related or is involved with emergent bilingual students. This shows the big picture for 11th grade. The outcomes are even more alarming, right? Like, we have 6% that are meeting standards or exceeding, and 1% in math. That is not appropriate. That is unacceptable, and this is what we're trying to interrupt. What I also want to bring to your attention is that the longer we wait to reclassify students, students start losing motivation. And so some of them just go through the motion, taking these LPAC assessments and CASP. And sometimes, when we miss opportunities for reclassification, our students lose interest. So what we're trying to do is motivate our students and continue to show why it's important for them to be present with their assessments and their academic work. This is an overview I wanted to show of the four-year cohort graduation rates as it relates to our English learners. We know that we have a lot to celebrate because we are graduating students, but we also have a lot to be concerned with because we're also losing students. And so that's the area where we are trying to interrupt. So going back to the criteria for reclassification, the LPAC assessment is determined by the California English Language Proficiency Assessment. The Board of Education approved that the overall score of a 4 would be qualifying the student to be considered for reclassification. That is, the state board approved. We locally determine what is required for the teacher evaluation, the parent involvement, and the student performance. In the EO Master Plan that was approved last year, we have a very specific chapter that really goes into it in depth. So I don't want to take too much time, but I want you to know there are four criteria. And what we show, sorry, and what we show our families, I will show you a visual that they are able to follow so that it's easy to follow, so that it's parent-friendly, student-friendly, even teacher-friendly, so that they can see what the criteria are, so that they're able to map out what it looks like for their child. As we're uncovering inequities and we're uncovering what we need to change in our system, we also learned that our students that are duly identified were not being reclassified at all. And so what we're trying to do is turn that around. We want to reclassify our students, and therefore, we are working on improving how we're training our staff and how we're training our families and for students to understand the various pathways and where they fall in based on where they are. So for example, a student with an IEP that is supported by an RSB teacher would be able to reclassify through Pathway 1. But a student with, let's say, a severe to moderate IEP with IEP goals and needing more intervention and more support would need to be through a Pathway 2 reclassification process. That is a whole training in itself. I'm not going to go into it since I only have four minutes left, so I want to make sure that you know that we're paying attention and we're interrupting these things and improving them. So this is our reclassification rate. This is internal. These are internal numbers for the last three years. Ko is, Ko? He is our data management technician, and he's supporting us with making sure that we're accounting for every reclassification even after the census date or after CAL-PATS. That's a whole different process. But just know that these numbers are not going to match what's in Data Quest because these are numbers that are showing after students have been reclassified after the census date. This is the visual I was referencing. This is what we provide our families so they can see what the four criteria are and what is needed under each of those four criteria. That has to happen within that academic year in order for that student to be reclassified. So we will need the LPAC score of a 4. We need a form of assessment data, whether it's CASP or interim assessment. We will need a teacher evaluation as well as parent opinion. We always want to include our families. Our parents are very important in this process. And this is the roadmap for our secondary space. The only difference here is that we would be looking at grades and, of course, credits. So the next four slides are really to bring awareness on the diversity that we serve in relating, as it relates to our emergent bilingual community. This case story, this is an example of a Pathway 1 reclassification. This student is a senior, reclassified in September, long-term English learner, entered our system as a fifth-grade student, currently earned 275 credits out of 225 with a GPA of 3.6, met all A-3G requirements thus far, and expects to graduate in June. Why this is important is because if this child is doing so well, why did we wait so long? And again, I'm not placing blame. All I'm saying is, this is the diversity that we're working with. Many questions arise. I know you have many questions, so I'm going to continue. This is a case story where this child was reclassified through Pathway 2. This student is grade 16, has primary and secondary disabilities, has aged out of standardized assessments with a GPA of 2.78 in a restrictive environment. This student would not have reclassified had we not uncovered the fact that this child should be reclassified because they're, this student, no matter what we do, is, you know, they've aged out of these assessments. This case story is about another student that reclassified through Pathway 1 in fifth grade in a structured English immersion classroom environment with a GPA of 3.25, did not meet, or currently has a low ELA score in CASP and has good attendance. Questions that arise are, if this student fell back in their ELA assessment, what is the school doing to ensure that that student doesn't fall back? Did we reclassify the student too soon? Well, they're in eighth grade, so I hope not. And let me continue. This last case story is, this student does not meet reclassification criteria. This student is a sixth grader, also a long-term English learner that entered our system as a kindergartner with an LPAC of a 4. However, did not meet the ELA CASP or the ELAI Ready, and they are currently at a 2 in their reading. So lots of questions to be asked about this, right? So these next steps are to reassure the Board of Education and our community that we are committed to continue to monitor all instructional and operational supports across sites and departments. We're going to continue to increase monitoring for English learners to make sure they're not credit deficient, and if they are, we need to bring awareness quickly to the schools. I know counselors are there, but sometimes it's important that we partner with our counselors at the sites. We're going to continue to operationalize the reclassification process, provide Tier 2 services, collect data so that we can study the data so we can support whatever it is that we need to focus on, continue to make recommendations, and continue to bring this forward. We will continue to bring updates to the Board of Education. And I want to end with this quote. And that, I'm sure you have heard that quote and what it directly translates to, because I don't want to translate it loosely. "Education is the most powerful weapon which you can use to change the world," from Nelson Mandela. And I don't want to overuse this quote, but I think this has made the point that if we continue to educate our children and we continue to interrupt these processes that are not good for children and we put things in place that are, then lots of great things are going to happen within our community. And we're open for your questions.
Thank you. That was informational item. However, we are looking for public comment.
We do not have any.
We have none. All right, board. Got some questions on this particular. Mr. Rhodes, please go.
Thank you for the presentation. I had two questions, and one of the questions, I guess, you guys answered on the last slide, but I'll ask it anyway first before I ask my second question. And just like, what are we doing to better identify students who should be reclassified earlier? And I know you went to the slide, but can you directly speak towards that one again?
Yes, so the question is, what are we going to do to basically identify students better?
Right. You had the one classification, I mean, I meant classification, but the one example where a student is excelling.
Long-term.
And long-term and excelling, but then we didn't get them reclassified too much later, and that we should have got them reclassified much earlier. So the thought process is, what are we doing?
Yes.
To not be in that situation and better service our students?
Yes, and that is our responsibility. So what we're looking at right now, not only are we having our team members work very closely by communicating with sites and communicating with site supervisors, but making sure that we also have a structure within the multilingual department to ensure that we're able to flag students immediately. Whether the student comes in brand-new from a different district or a student is already long-term, right? So we have to understand that we have to focus on the LTALs, focus on everyone. But right now, the main, the goal is to look at LTALs to ensure that we can capture them because most likely, our LTALs are also credit deficient. So we're trying to look at elementary first and look at the LTAL percent as well as middle school and look at the LTAL percent, and then look at the high school, and provide indirect services that are supplementary services to the students there, as well as bring professional learning opportunities for the sites that need it so we can help our teachers, our principals, make sure that they're supporting. Because PL shouldn't just be a standalone PL. PL should be, I learned something that I'm going to then make it actionable in the classroom and be able to measure the success. If, in fact, for example, ELD-designated is happening, if the teacher understands the principles of designated ELD, then they're going to be able to provide designated ELD on a daily basis for students.
Okay. And then wondering, from school site, I don't know if you guys have that disaggregated data with each day, but I'm interested in seeing the LTALs and how it breaks down by school site and area, if you can get that information to the board. I think that would be very helpful so we can have a clear view of how that breaks down in our areas. This is all great information. My own daughter tested reclassified in second grade, right? And they're able to, they're able to notice, like, oh, she's doing well here. We can actually reclassify her out. And so this is something that my own family has dealt with. But my next question to you is this. On page 11, you were talking about English learner performance data. And I guess my question to you, you said you're talking about the numbers are not good.
No.
But my question to you is, what are the academic supports to help interrupt these numbers? And what are you actually doing right now? What are those academic supports? And then also, how are you engaging with families? I know you talked about the importance of those things.
Yes.
But can you give us, like, tangible things you're doing now?
Yes.
Or things that you would like to do in the future to better impact these numbers?
Well, we are continuing to work across departments to improve the way we're providing professional learning for district-wide as well as site-specific. So that's one thing that we're doing. Another thing that we're doing is we're looking at supplementary services such as, for ex, I'll use this as an example since it's one of the services that we have readily available for students, and that's Lexia English, which really focuses on the language development and focuses on three out of the four domains from the LPAC. So that we're working with our students that are scoring ones and twos in that area, and that is a Tier 2, what we would consider a Tier 2 support. I understand that different schools also have in their school plans for student achievement or the SIPSS, they have supports that they're also providing our English learners, so it's very site-specific as well. What we would like to do is create an opportunity for us to continue to build on those supplementary services so that we can have tutoring, tutoring for Saturday school, tutoring before and after school. Because if we have these opportunities for students, most likely, they will see, we are already seeing change, right? If you look at the slide that shows how many students have been reclassified, you can see that there's growth in the number of students that are being reclassified, and that's simply uncovering who needs it, right? The other piece you asked is about the parent engagement. Through DLOC, we're bringing opportunities for them to be educated. We also partner with the Family and Community Engagement Office so that we are able to educate our students, our students and families, our families on the LPAC. What is the LPAC? Why is it important? Why is, why should you be involved? Look, this is a practice test. Let's go through a practice test ourselves, a mini-practice test, obviously, where we're able to translate for them and support them. What we want to see in the future is allow, having, what do you call those headphones that translate for our families and students so that we're able to, on demand, just have those available so we're able to go into school sites like Rosemont, for example, or Luther Burbank, or CKM, or any other school that needs to, so that we're able to have on-demand what the parents need and us be able to communicate with them. And so we do use Title III funds to be able to support that. So as I finish out the year, we have these things in place for next school year. So it's been a building, it's been like a building block since I started, you know, we're rebuilding, coming back. I mean, I don't want to blame COVID, right? Like, we don't have that excuse. I don't have that excuse. I don't have that luxury. Our students don't have that luxury. So that's what we're doing.
Okay, and then lastly, how has it been building out our D-LAX and ELAX on the ground floor? I know that the assistance of that, you guys talked about, you guys, that was part of your plan before. What does that look like? What's the update on that? And how are we maneuvering?
We now have a board that pretty soon will be coming before you to share out. They are very nervous, as you can imagine. This is their first time being as part of a DLOC board. And so we are training our officers so they can facilitate the DLOC meetings, so they can come before you and give an update on what they're doing. But they are eager and they're active, and I'm just excited. I'm tickled, actually, because at first I was very worried, and now that we have a team, I'm like, they are going to just thrive because our bylaws have our boards for, have our board for two years. So I'm excited. You'll see them. I just can't wait.
Wonderful.
This is exciting.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Pritchett.
Thank you. Thank you for this presentation, and I'm glad to see the numbers going up. I do just have two quick things. I really like this infographic that you came up with. Can I assume that when it's being given to parents that it's in different languages?
The languages have been translated for DLOC presentations, but I see where you're going with this, yes. So we should have them readily available. So the materials that we provide in DLOC are translated in the top languages we serve.
Okay.
But just be aware that I didn't put it in there, but yes.
Okay. I figured that was the case. I just wanted to ask the question. And then I appreciate you giving us the case studies and going through the case studies with us. And it kind of puts, you know, not really a face, but like, you know, kind of a real person to, you know, what we're looking at, but a real child to what we're looking at, a real student. But I have to admit that I'm kind of disturbed by that last one, by, on page 22, the child that came to us in kindergarten and then did not, did not meet the criteria, right? And so I just kind of wanted to ask you, like, this is probably one of many, right? And what have we learned from this? And what can we be doing better to be able to, I mean, because we had this child in kindergarten. They didn't come to us in fifth grade. They didn't come to us in third grade. We had him in kindergarten. So what could we be doing better?
Those are very great questions, and I have to say to you that that's what we're currently working on to define further, and this is why, because there's such diversity across. And this is why, because there's such diversity across and maybe understanding of what is expected. Let me just give you an example. So when we reclassify students, people must think that, okay, they're reclassified. Yeah, yes, the, no, it's not. It's not like that. It has, we have by law, by state and federal law, we need to monitor our students for four years to make sure that, there's three reasons, right? To make sure that the students have not been prematurely exited from the EL program, to make sure that, that any deficit that is remediated right away, like we saw in the other case where the child came back with a two after having reclassified, right? What happened there? And then also so that students have access to the academic program within the school day. So what this requires is really for our, our, our leaders at the school site, our instructional leaders to be able to look at their student by name, to be able to look at what kinds of services or the plan that they're proposing, right? That their school communities are proposing. We come in to provide the guidance. We come in to do the supplementary piece, but we're not existing in the actual school sites on a daily basis. So we can provide the numbers, but really, to your point, this is a face. You know, we had to protect, but this is a face. And so that's what we're working on. So in our next presentation to you, in our next follow-up, we will come back to give you more, more updates as far as what has been done around the cases that we have uncovered.
Okay.
I mean, that, that's like, that's our work, right? Like, that's the ongoing work. We cannot do this alone and we are going to have to desilo our system even further.
Yeah, agreed. Okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Ms. Villa.
Just a quick follow-up because both of you had addressed similar things that I had concerns about. When we look at the data and we do identify a student, how often are we following up? Because let's just say if it's kindergarten or first grade and we see these test scores and we have the actual data to report back, are we looking at this on an ongoing basis? Or how are we truly tracking the student's path? Because, you know, by second or, I mean, some of this data have not met or exceeded is extremely, that's troubling to see. So what is our follow-up process to ensure that we're tracking this student? I know four years, but what exactly are we doing?
And, and because there is variation site by site, they are looking at their students, but there is variation. There's not one standard way that schools right now are tracking. And, and I'm just telling you, just being transparent with you, but what we're trying to create is, is a way to be able to look at student data that is on a, on a consistent basis and that we're looking at areas that we have control over. And I will say this, for example, CASP, we have data that is readily accessible to us, right? We have children at 95% or more participation rate. But when we look at, for example, our, our district benchmarks or I-Ready data, for example, we are not at 95% because it, you know, because our, you know, our current system is not set up that way where, you know, there's an opt-in feature, you know, to this, to being able to take these assessments. And what we're trying to do is really look at what we do have control over, which is LPAC. We know that, right? We know that there's a teacher feedback. We also know that there's a parent feedback. And then what we are continuing to work on is what else can we do for the assessment? Because assessments have to be, we have to compare apples to apples. We can't use like my own data from X school to a Y school that's using a whole different set of data. We need to be able to use standardized data across our system. But we're not there. I mean, just, that's just the reality. But we're, we're trying to work through that and around that and, and serve our students.
Okay, I appreciate that. I just wish there was a system that, you know, here, for the district to oversee this information and create, I don't know if it's a three month or a one month follow-up because just the large, the longer gap of time that these students fall behind, we just see, we, we know what is going to happen. So I really encourage that good follow-up. So I appreciate all the work. I know this is good presentation, but it's just really challenging to digest.
And thank you for the feedback. And that's what we're going to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Villa. A couple of questions, but it sounds like primarily data is what we work with. If we don't have all the data, then it's kind of hard to see where you're going to plug in or pull out or do what you need to do with the students. But, and that's fantastic that we're working toward it. Can't be perfect in the beginning and there's always up. But I am thinking in my head here about African vernacular, American English. I can't even say it today. African-American vernacular English. Is there any consideration for that being a language that we can utilize to be able to increase, to, to increase progress for students? And I'm talking specifically, you know, mostly black students, but, you know, there, obviously, we can see there are deficits and children who speak different languages coming to an English learning school and falling behind because they're not learning in their primary, primary language. I am wondering if we are considering that is some kind of factor in, in making sure that we're improving the success for black students. Not necessarily that we want to take away a cultural language, but to, to really understand that that could be another reason why some of our numbers for our, our black and African-American students are so low. That it might actually just be a translation issue related to regular Queens English versus African-American vernacular.
That's a great point that we definitely will consider. And I will also do some more research with CDE and SCOE as well to see if there are other districts that perhaps have already something in place. And if we do, we'll, I will update you.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Segura.
Yeah. For clarification, while you're gathering the data, is it primarily by standardized testing, like written tests, et cetera?
Standardized, sorry, standardized test language and that's LPAC. And then we also look at CASP. And then we look at if the student has a current I-Ready, which is our district assessments. If they didn't qualify with the CASP.
Right. Just for possible consideration, oftentimes standardized testing doesn't directly reflect a student's ability within the classroom and performance actively. Are there any processes in place for tracking active progress? Or is it like majority standardized testing?
That's a great question, Ms. Segura. What we have in our, currently adopted in our master plan is the roadmap that we shared with you. The teacher gets to give us their perspective and they're looking at, you know, how they're doing academically through a different lens, right? Through the teacher lens. However, because those three criteria are pretty much LEA-directed and adopted, we can definitely look at any recommendation that perhaps you have and we could look at, at research to see if that's feasible. And we can make those, you know, we can adopt it if the board chooses to move in that direction. But what we're trying to do is of course, prepare students to be college and career-ready beyond a cradle to 12 environment. We want them to thrive after this, right? We want them, no matter what, that they have an opportunity to that job that they want or that college they want to go into.
Yeah, absolutely. For possible consideration, as you go further in this process, often stressful environments on tests and even like if you're looking at the IEP rates, if you're looking at IEP rates, especially with mental disabilities, oftentimes those pressurized environments can lead to like altered results. So consideration for verbal assessment or just like conversational aspects of things to learn about the progress between the student and an adult or trusted adult could help to bring a clearer understanding.
Yes, thank you. And that's what we do with the IEP process. They have language goals and they also have accommodations.
Thank you. So another comments from my colleagues. I appreciate your presentation. This was informational.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks. We've got a public hearing coming up. Item 10, 10.1, AB 1200, Public Disclosure and Approval of MOU Between SEUSD and SCTA. Welcome, Ms. Marking.
Thank you. Is this on? Hello? Yes, okay. Good evening, President Phillips, Superintendent Allen, members of the board and community. This is item 10.1, AB 1200, Public Disclosure of a Negotiated Agreement with SCTA. My name is on it, however, it is a cross-departmental collaboration to bring this together. So I am going to turn this right over to my great friends, Dr. Consey McClellan, Chief Human Resources Officer, and Jessie Castillo, Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, to present the information to you. Thank you.
Dr. McClellan, Mr. Castillo, the floor is yours.
Just Consey. Good evening, Board Superintendent. If we could change the slide, we are going to talk with you about the agreement and the AB 1200 before you this evening. We recognize first of all that we left a very important name off of the negotiations team and that is our legal counsel, Elsney Grantham. Otherwise, you could see the members of the negotiations, the other members of the negotiations team there that worked very hard and diligently based on board and superintendent direction and with a number of other staff to bring this to you. So with this, we have an agreement on Article 8, which is about transfers, the hiring process, Article 12, which is compensation as well as things related to that, class size, and then some contingency waiver language. So this agreement with SCTA completely resolves negotiations for the 2324 school years and the 2425 school years. Next page, slide. So we'll go through a slide on each of the articles and of course, happy to answer questions afterwards. What we try to do is just pull out and highlight some of the more key pieces. Although as you might imagine, within Articles 8, 12, and 17, there are a whole host of things. Again, this represents our summary. So the agreement on Article 8 helps to move the hiring timeline up in a number of places. We are looking to, always looking to be as competitive as we can be in the district. And so as a goal on the onset, that was something that was able to be accomplished in this agreement. It increases those defined as additional applicants that can be referred during the closed period or the unit member priority period to include our student teachers, open contracts, those within the district pipeline systems, which is the benefit. Also, it provides additional flexibility in the filling of positions that become vacant in the spring. Previously, we had difficulty in just having sub after sub when something becomes vacant in the springtime. We, we think this gives us greater flexibility. It also enhances the surplus process, including a surplus fair, which will be new to our district. So it maintains the, the, the main portion of the surplus process and adds a fair. So an opportunity for principals or their leadership teams to come, have a table, talk about their school site and those going through the surplus process to visit and learn about schools before they go in and make decisions. It increases the open period, again, part of the focus on the timeline and trying to be as competitive and flexible as we can. It also increases the number of qualified applicants that can be referred during that open period, giving sites as much flexibility as we can to be able to identify the right persons, right people for their positions. It also establishes an opportunity for those interested in subs, those substitutes who are interested in receiving their emergency career substitute permit. So looking at ways to just further enhance and provide support, not for, not only for our substitutes, but also for our sites, which we know depend on our substitutes. It also establishes a timeline for communications related to the outcome of the budget development process meetings that sites have with budget, with HR, with their IASs. And it establishes a timeline for communication on potential changes within early learning and care and the special education programs for the upcoming school year. Next slide. In Article 12, some of the, the areas we wanted to highlight is effective July 1, 2324, the salary schedule shall, shall increase by 6%. We want to note that the parties acknowledge that savings is achieved by change in Articles 13.18. B, were used to increase the across-the-board increases for 2324 from 4 to 6. Additionally, effective July 1, 24, the salary schedules will increase from, increase by 2%. So while the district put new money of 4% for current year, 2% for the new year, the additional changes resulted in the 6. Additional experience credit opportunities are giving, are now being given to incoming employees, which we think helps with our recruitment efforts. There's language clarification on the training classification requirements as teachers look to move along the salary schedule. There is also language in Article 12 that's a clarification of the computations used to equalize pay for new employees. So that first check isn't very, very different from what other checks would be that the new employees get. In Article 12, also there's compensation for required extra service. So elementary school teachers who are not provided with their prep period get additional compensation in terms of either having a makeup prep or getting compensated for that prep, a practice that is already in place and is now identified in the language. Designated teachers in charge who assume duties of a principal or an assistant principal get a monthly or depending on the situation stipend. And that is language in the contract that hadn't changed in like 20 years. It was still $50 a month. And so needing to update that was what that part spoke to. There's also extra pay for extra duties. So as the district has added new sports in elementary and just new sports in general and activities, this required us to update this particular chart or schedule. So it included that, it included equalizing pay between sports, updating language, and making pay adjustments for some of those sports and activities. Additionally, in Article 12, the department chair or lead, department lead language was updated. Next slide. In Article 17, which is class size, it, or number of portions in there too. So effective for 2425, grades four through six, class size reduced to 30 students per teacher. Effective the following year, 2526, in grade seven through 12 and secondary classes, will be reduced to 32 students for those in English, Social Studies, Math, and Science, as well as adding consistency in language related to the adjustments or leveling of classes. It was already in the contract, just consistent across elementary and secondary. It also established consistent class size overage pay for $90 a day. So that is not new. That is just consistent. In some places it said 90, in some places it said 100. It is now consistent. Provides all special education teachers with two release days for planning, preparing, and developing IEPs in this current year, 2324, and an additional three days for that same planning, preparing, and developing IEPs in the 2425 school year. This agreement also provides for two six-hour aides for our SDC classes, our special day classes, and provides for an RSP teacher to be assigned an instructional aide for the duration of their instructional assignment. So if the RSP teacher is a .8, then the aide would be in .8. If they're a full F, one FTE, then the aide would be a full FTE. It also adds 13 additional nurse positions, specifically looking at providing care for our students with diabetes. Provides for in each secondary school to have a librarian and each K8 school to have a .5 librarian, except for Rosa Parks, which would have a 1.0 librarian. And in this article also establishes ratios consistent with ed code for programs, specialists, resource specialists, and psychologists. And the last part that I'll speak to is an omnibus section or an agreement. Now this, for some parts, those first two that have the asterisks are contingent upon the State Board of Education approving our waiver submission, which the district intends to make. So contingent portion of it is that makeup days for students next school year, 2425, and the following year, 2526, we would add an additional eight instructional days to the beginning of each of those school years so that this coming year, school would start August 19th and in 2526 on the 18th. and in 25-26, on the 18th. Teachers would have their service year increased for those additional eight instructional days. If the waivers approve after May 15th, because the next time we can even possibly get in front of the State Board of Education is in May, the beginning of May. If the waivers approved after the 15th but before October 15th, then the instructional days would be added to the next two years, 25-26 and 26-7, 26-27 school years. The other part that is based on contingency language, contingence of approval of the waiver, is that there would be an additional 92 certificated FTE that would be added in the 25-26 school year for a period of five years. So not ongoing positions, limited to what would be part of this waiver approval. The parts of this that are not contingent on the waiver and that would happen is a creation of a design and implementation of multi-tiered systems of support, so MTSS. And I know the teams have already started meeting to begin that important work. The reduction, the district commits a reduction in the use of outside contractors, as well as the restoration of seven behavioral intervention specialists this year, and an additional eight BISs, behavioral intervention specialists, next year. Additionally, this would withdraw the unfair practice charges and amendment of grievance that is outstanding, that are outstanding. So with that, I'll turn it over to my colleague, Jesse Castillo, to talk about the fiscal impact.
Great. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Consey. This is the AB 1200 fiscal impact for the fiscal year 23-24, an estimated cost of $20 million for all funds. And then looking at the 24-25 year, approximately $35.8 million for all funds. And then in 25-26, $35.4 million for all funds. And then a few notes at the bottom. The estimated impact of these above costs are included within the 23-24 second interim report that you'll be seeing later on this evening. And then the projected costs do not include the impact of the omnibus contingency provisions that Consey shared on that previous slide, so. And with that, that takes us to the next slide for any Q and A. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That was a lot. Do we have any public comment? I see a head nod that says there are none. Dear Board, what say you? Mr. Caillada?
So I just want to celebrate what the team here has done and also our labor partners. And for the first time in a while, when we say labor partners, we really mean it, because that's illustrated here by the agreement we've come to. This really reflects the continued positive direction that the school district is going to, both where we are now and as we plan to go into the future. So thank you very much for the work. Thank you also for the transparency around the omnibus provisions. I know a lot of people are asking about, what are we doing about the strike penalty? And are we getting that waiver? And what does it mean? And I think we explained it a little bit here. And, you know, I know we will be sharing more information with our community as it firms up. But thank you to the team and thank you to our labor partners for, you know, we really have changed the direction of this district and how we work together. And I'm happy to be here with this. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members like to discuss? Call for motion. Thank you. And a student preferential vote?
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Member Caillada?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Sorry, that motion passes. We're moving on to item 11.1, Independent Audit Report for the Fiscal Year ended June 30, 2023. This is Crowe LLP, Ms. Marking.
Thank you so much. Good evening again, President Phillips, Superintendent Allen, members of the board and community. Again, I'm Janay Marking, Chief Business and Operations Officer, and this is item 11.1, the 2022-23 Annual Audit Report. It is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Jeff Jensen. Jeff Jensen is a partner with Crowe LLP out of the firm's Sacramento office. Jeff leads the public education audit practice for Crowe. Mr. Jensen is a regular presenter on technical matters at various state-level organizations such as Casbo and is an active member of the California Audit Guide Task Force. This is Jeff's fourth year serving as the lead partner on the Sacramento City USD Audit. Jeff, we appreciate you joining us this evening to provide the report to the board.
Welcome, Mr. Jensen. Floor is yours.
Great. Thank you. Good evening. It's my privilege to be here to present the audit report for the year ended June 30, 2023. I've got a few slides that'll help distill down the length of the audit report there into some key facts and then be happy to answer any questions that you might have. So just a little background, I'd like to start with who we are as an accounting firm. We're one of the largest firms in the world and in the United States. But here close to, or close to home, we've been working with California school districts for well over 30 years now. We work with some of the largest in the state and we're very proud of those credentials that we have. But one of the ones that's most important is to tell you that we are independent of the, of Sac City Unified School District. So it's important for us to be able to opine as your independent auditors. Our engagement team is led by myself. There's two other partners that are looking over my shoulder to make sure that I'm doing what I'm supposed to be doing as your engagement partner and making sure that our audit follows the technical standards that we're required to follow. And then Elizabeth and Tori are very important pieces of our team as well at this, as a senior manager and senior staff on our team. So this audit started a long time ago, if you will, and it's continued to evolve as we go through the year. It starts way back in May with doing our planning procedures and starting to look at compliance and understanding the different updates that have occurred throughout the district since the last time we had visited the district. From there, assessing our different risks that we're required to do as part of our audit, which helps us develop the amount of procedures that we need to do in order to be able to provide our opinion at the end of the day on your financial statements. The second phase is to come back out in the October timeframe and do the actual audit of the numbers themselves. Some of you may be familiar, the audit is due on December 15th to the state of California. However, this year, you had to have an extension because of the J-13 waiver for the days that the district had to close school for, because of the weather and storms that you had there. And that was something that was very common throughout California school districts this last fiscal year. I believe when I talked to the state comptroller's office, they said they had over 800 school districts that had an extension this year because of the J-13 waiver issues and having those approved by CDE. All right. There were no real, there were no new accounting standards that had a material impact to your financial statements this year. So from a Gatsby perspective, there was nothing that has significant change to your financial position. As far as audit adjustments go, there was one audit adjustment. And again, if you've had my, seen my presentation before, this is one that, the one corrected audit adjustment relates to work with the Sacramento County Treasurer and your bond funds. Unfortunately, they are not accounting for those in a method that complies with GAAP, and so we have to correct that. So again, this isn't something that management has done incorrectly, per se, but it's something that has to be corrected in order for your financial statements to be materially correct. There were no other, other corrected misstatements, and there were no other uncorrected misstatements. So those are the smaller differences that we track to make sure they don't accumulate into a larger amount that could be material overall to the financial statements. As far as other communications we're required to share with you as your auditors, there were no difficulties that we encountered in completing the audit. We didn't have any disagreements with management. And we're not aware of any other adverse events or significant matters that we would have shared with the board a lot earlier than tonight, had there been any. So good news there. There are several different opinions that are part of this financial statement audit. The first is your financial statements themselves. The district received an unmodified opinion, which is the type of opinion you want on your audit reports. Your financial statements comply with all the applicable accounting pronouncements and are free of material misstatement. Next is federal compliance. The district obviously has a large amount of federal dollars that you expend, and we're required to audit those as well. And we found that the district had an unmodified opinion regarding federal compliance, so there were no federal compliance findings. And then lastly, state compliance. There's a number of state compliance areas that are applicable to your district. And so we have to look at those every year. This year, there were six different state compliance findings, and you can see the fiscal impacts related to those. So while six sounds like a big number, at the end of the day, the fiscal impact was about $55,000, which isn't very significant to a district of this size. And in a minute here, I'll cover what each of those comments relate to. Just a quick recap of, you know, for perspective of the size of your school district. So at June 30, 2023, you had assets of about $1.5 billion and a negative net position of $317 million. And really, what causes that to be negative is the two liabilities that you're required to track. One relates to pensions, and the other relates to your post-employment benefits. So those are two, obviously, very significant numbers that draw that number from, to a negative position. Although for the year, there was a positive change in net position of about $300 million. And then specifically, for your general fund, at June 30, there was a fund balance of just under $258 million and a positive change of $148 million from the prior year. All right. So as far as the findings and recommendations go, probably a slide that should be in there that would be blank would be to say that there's no internal control comments to bring to the board's attention. So I think that's good news to, to report back to you, that there were no findings related to internal controls, no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in that, in that area. Specifically related to state compliance, the first one was, again, was on attendance. The issue here was, as part of your attendance filings, one of the lines needs to report continuation education. It was actually included in the total ADA, but as far as the breakout in the supplemental section there, it was missing. So that had, that needed to be fixed. And so there's no fiscal impact to that comment. The second one relates to instructional materials. So the district is required to hold a public hearing regarding instructional materials within the first eight weeks of school. And that did not happen during fiscal '23. So there is no fiscal impact to this finding. And obviously, we recommend that that occur within the first eight weeks of school. The third comment relates to comprehensive school safety plans. So we're required to look at those for the sites that we looked at on rotation. We found that one of those was not reviewed and approved by March 1, 2023, which is the state requirement. So again, no fiscal impact again to this. But obviously, the reminder is to have all your comprehensive school safety plans reviewed and approved by March 1. All right. The fourth comment relates to immunizations. This is also a repeat finding from the prior year. Again, there was a few students that were found to have not had the required doses and essentially the immunization records on hand prior to the student being allowed to participate in school. And so there is a disallowance of ADA, although you can see it's very small there, .189 ADA. So it actually, at that level, doesn't require a restatement of your annual reports of attendance. All right. And the fifth comment relates to ACES, or your After and Before School Education Safety Program. So we're required to look at the supporting records of student counts that are held at the sites that you have this program operated at. And so there was an issue essentially here with the vendor that didn't, that you discontinued a relationship with, and then they didn't provide or hold on to the records to support the student enrollment that you had for those programs. So again, we have to report that. There's not a fiscal impact to the finding. And then the last one is on transitional kindergarten. This was a new compliance area for this year. And we have a, again, support issue related to the adult-to-pupil average ratio. And so the fiscal impact to this is .7988, or about $53,000. All right. Just to wrap up my comments. Last slide is that the district's financial statements are presented in all material respects fairly and comply with all the applicable accounting pronouncements. We had no federal findings. We had no internal control comments. There's a lot that goes into putting together a 120-page audit report, and there's a number of compliance areas. It doesn't just work with fiscal services. Certainly, they do a large part of it. But there's a number of school sites that we visit throughout the year. And so appreciate everyone's willingness to help us and provide information that we need in order to be able to complete the audit. And really, outside of the J-13 issue, this audit would have been completed on time this year, so. And it was filed in compliance with your extension, so you, your audit report was filed on time, so. So all in all, good job, I think, for the district there and good job to, to your team for the hard work that they put in. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. Any public comments, sir?
No public comment.
How about my colleagues? What say you all?
I got a question.
Sure.
When you talked about the immunizations, those few students that were left out, were there any extenuating circumstances for those students not having immunizations when they were enrolled?
I don't know that I have support for that. You know, ours is kind of more of a black and white. Was it there? And, and if they don't comply with that, then we quantify, you know, the, the impact related to that for the student that was counted present during that time. I don't know if staff has any other information they'd like to share, but.
Yeah, I was just curious if maybe there was a foster youth or some, something that might have brought a child in without immunization. But if you don't have that, you can bring it back later. Tris me. We'll do it later. All right.
I know. I'm just saying, students up here, so, all right. Thank you. So we have no further discussion. From my colleagues, Ms. Pritchett sent a motion second. Who seconded? Mr. Singh? And student preferential vote?
Aye.
Roll call. Madam Superintendent?
Member Caillada?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Jensen. Thank you, staff. We are moving on to, I believe, we are at 11.2, 2023-24 Second Interim Financial Report. Ms. Marking, your floor.
Thank you. Good evening for the final time, President Phillips, Superintendent Allen, members of the board and community. Again, I'm Janay Marking, Chief Business and Operations Officer, and this is item 11.2, the 2023-24 Second Interim Financial Report, which is presented to you this evening for qualified certification. First, thank you so much to Jesse Castillo, Assistant Superintendent, and Cindy Tao, Director, and their teams. So many people contribute to this report, and their time is appreciated. The entire report is available, excuse me, is available in the board materials and will be on our website. The board adopted the 2023-24 budget on June 22, and the 45-day revise was presented August 17. We reviewed the first interim report together on December 14, and now this report provides budgeting updates and actuals through January 31 and a look forward into the next two years to best understand the district's current projected financial position. Our presentation will provide a summary of the entire report, looking at general fund revenues and expenditures, changes to fund balance, and a multi-year projection update. The general fund is the district's primary discretionary operating fund, but also included is a slide on the special funds operated for designated purposes. Once again, intubating these numbers to present this to the board tonight, we represent the collective effort of all staff working together to maintain district solvency, stability, and local control. This chart of acronyms is provided as a reference and an agenda of what we will review tonight. This slide is a reminder of the annual budget cycle, which never stops. We are always balancing three years at the same time, closing out the prior year audit, which just occurred, managing and implementing the current year, and planning and developing the next fiscal year. We are currently at the blue arrow, which again, is actuals through January 31, and projections incorporating those actuals through the end of the fiscal year. Noteworthy is that the LCAP process and budget process overlap as it is specifically intended that our resources are aligned to our goals and our vision. First, we'll look at revenues. Again, these are actuals through January 31 and updated projections based on those numbers. Approximately 66% of general fund revenues are unrestricted, while 34% are restricted for special purposes, such as Title I or special education. Unrestricted funds are largely discretionary, and restricted funds are spent according to specific rules. We receive revenues from four primary sources. The largest, of course, 64%, being the Local Control Funding Formula, or LCFF, which is from the state of California. Next, federal provides 19% of district revenue. Other state is 16%, and local revenue is about 1% of the total. This chart provides an overview of revenue by source at three different snapshots in time, at our adopted budget, again, June 2023, first interim, which is through October 2023, and second interim through the end of January 2024. As of this report, the total projected revenue for the fiscal year is $790,211,395. There was very little change in LCFF, about a 1% incre-, or sorry, .01% increase from the first interim budget projection. Federal revenue increased by about 5%, and other state revenue increased by about 3%. This slide provides a high level, this slide provides high-level information on the revenue changes represented in the previous chart to call out the big adjustments for you. Both federal and state revenues increased due to budgeting of carryover funds, meaning they were carried forward from the prior year and budgeted in the current year in restricted programs. Additionally, there are adjustments for enrollment true-up in one Additionally, there are adjustments for enrollment true-up and one-time interest funds that were earned. Next, we move on to expenditures. Approximately 53% of general fund expenditures are unrestricted, while 47% are restricted. And remember, looking at our revenues a few slides ago, only 34% of our revenues are restricted. And so you see here that the proportion of restricted expenditures exceeds the amount of restricted revenues. That leads to the contribution, which we will look at together in a future slide. This chart shows expenditures by major account code compared by the same three snapshots we looked at before, adopted budget from June, first interim through October, and second interim through January. We can see the variances by category as annual spending activity has progressed. Important is to consider why the variances have occurred. We know that most significantly, the district continues to settle contracts with all labor groups that also include retroactive payments for the 2022-23 school year. Additionally, this analysis calls our attention to escalating contract costs between the reporting periods, highlighting that our work to review the district's contracting needs and procedures is important to continue. Let's take a look at the details on these changes. First, expenditures total $852,835,651, which is about a 2.5, about 2.3% overall increase since the first interim. Looking at larger changes, you can see here that again, certificated and classified salaries and benefits increased as the district is engaged in negotiations, achieving settlements for the 2022-23 fiscal year with all employee units. And in February, the Board approved an agreement for the current year and next year with SCTA, our partners representing certificated staff. Additionally, while books and materials decreased slightly, services and operating increased due to adjustment supporting programmatic needs. Lastly, an estimated contribution of about $107,000 has been added for the Adult Education Fund. Next, this is a look at the total general fund contributions for this fiscal year. Contributions occur when unrestricted general fund revenues must cover excess restricted costs due to insufficient funding for our special programs. You can see the projected contribution to special education remains the same as projected at first interim. The contribution made to the routine restricted maintenance also remained consistent with prior projection. And as mentioned in the last slide, as mentioned in a past slide, this slide now also reflects the Adult Education Fund projected contribution that is necessary to support programmatic needs. Moving on to put it all together and do some math, this chart shows a comparison of total revenue to total expenditures in our three snapshot timeframes, adopted budget, first interim, and second interim. We've already discussed the changes since adopted budget, and although there's a large jump in expenditure since June, we understand the changes because they were expected. Next, a look at how general fund fund balance is changing alongside the revenue and expenditure totals. As you know, fund balance is a projection of the one-time ending balance dollars that are a result of any surplus or deficit of overall budget spending. As of this report, total projected ending fund balance for the current year has decreased to $197,676,739 because of the known expenditure increases. This chart also shows the components of ending fund balance, both unrestricted and restricted, and we see that the amount of unrestricted fund balance decreased more than the amount of restricted fund balance. Moving on to look at our forecast tool, the multi-year projection update. Our interim reports require a multi-year projection, which is a look at the current fiscal year plus two future years to determine what the certification will be, positive, qualified, or negative. Certification is objectively determined based upon known assumptions, and again, staff is recommending a qualified certification for this evening. This slide provides major revenue assumptions driving the budget. First, the district is experiencing declining enrollment, which we will look at on a future slide, which negatively impacts revenues that are based on the number of students. Annual cost of living adjustments, or COLA, are based on the School Services of California DART Board, and these are also reflected. As a reminder, wait, I went too far. Oh, no. As a reminder shared in the Governor's January proposal, COLA expectations for next year have decreased significantly due to the lower-than-expected state revenue. Information on the projected reduced COLA for next year was provided to the Board in both December and January. Revenue projections also include expiration of one-time restricted funds, use of carryover funds, and adjustments to special education. Let's look at major expenditure assumptions in the multi-year projection. Even without competitive compensation increases, the cost of staffing increased due to step and column movement, STIRS and PERS contribution rates, and healthcare benefit cost increases. Because staffing is the largest expense in our budget, we are an organization of talent. Increases in salaries and benefits are important assumptions to include in our future projections. This is a look at the multi-year fund balance by the numbers all laid out, and this is the same information in a chart that's a little friendlier for analysis. This time, the three bars show current year budget as of second interim through January compared to projected 2024-25 and projected 25-26. You see that we continue to have positive balances of restricted fund balance as more and more state programs are established with restricted funds rather than unrestricted discretionary dollars. The chart also reflects unrestricted deficit spending, which we will continue to look at together to address rightsizing needs through a collaborative and transparent process. Recall, I just mentioned earlier, taking a closer look at our contracting needs as an example. I'm sure your attention is drawn to the negative ending unrestricted fund balance in 2025-26 minus. This is a result of deficit spending, an impact of the significantly reduced COLA, which alone is over $15 million per year. As I mentioned, the multi-year projection is a forecasting tool. It foretells the future based upon known assumptions. If everything in this budget occurs, as assumed, and nothing changes, this math is the result. However, that is unlikely because, one, it is impossible to assume perfect conditions, and, two, we have time to act, to right-size, and to correct the deficit through collaborative work to ensure the district remains solvent well in advance of 2025-26 and beyond. Staff is already engaged in a systems review in order to make recommendations to the Board. However, staff has made a recommendation for qualified certification tonight. This is based upon what is known at the time of this report in Language and Education Code Section 42131, which defines that a qualified certification is for a school district that, based upon current projections, may not meet its financial obligations for the current and two subsequent years. It is not necessarily an indication of district insolvency or fiscal mismanagement. Rather, this is a static snapshot that helps us monitor and identify need for preventative measures that ensure our fiduciary duties. Before we wrap up, here's a quick summary of our enrollment and other funds. This slide provides a look at district historical enrollment. Falling birth rates and mobility of families out of state has impacted the school-aged children population in California, and SCUSD definitely reflects a common trend that so many districts are managing. Enrollment as of Census Day, which is the first Wednesday in October, was 38,249, which is a decline of 579 students from the prior year. Though Census Day is another static snapshot, just like this report, we continue to track enrollment and attendance throughout the year. The district manages 12 funds in addition to the General Fund, each with their own rules and restrictions. Across the board, these funds are rather stable and self-sufficient. Each has a positive balance, and there's no need for additional contributions, with the exception of the Adult Education Fund, which was described earlier. In summary, the district is projected to maintain a positive cash flow in all years represented and satisfy the 2% reserve for economic uncertainties in 2023-24 and 2024-25. However, due to projected deficit spending and declining COLA, the projected negative unrestricted ending fund balance in 2025-26 indicates we may not satisfy the 2% reserve without adjustments. We know that ongoing planning and conversations are important to ensure stability, and we anxiously await the Governors may revise to better understand projected revenue changes for the upcoming years. In conclusion, staff recommends Board approval of a qualified certification per definitions provided in ED Code 42131 for the 22-23, or sorry, 23-24 Second Interim Fiscal Report. This recommendation is not to say that I don't want a positive certification. I do, as I know you and the SAC City community do as well. Yet we must objectively determine, based upon known assumptions, what the certification status will be. These are our best assumptions and the resulting calculations, given the timing. And while this is the current reality of this statutory exercise, we acknowledge this isn't apocalyptic, and we can do the work to get back to a positive certification. Though this projection indicates we may not meet the third-year reserve requirement, it's on us, all of us, to find adjustments next year to get back to positive, which is exactly what we are diving into. Last, let's look at the high-level narrative this budget provides. It indicates we value our people. Recent settlements reflect a commitment to competitive compensation. At the last Board meeting, you took action on position layoffs, but those were minimized as much as possible. Rather than the list of positions being much longer, only those seen as necessary at this time were recommended. Staff is working to bring you solutions and recommendations that are thoughtful, inclusive, and considerate of student programs, because a knee-jerk reaction of heavy cuts that are not well-thought-out would be damaging to our programs and our culture. We work in we work on small margins, because we invest our dollars in outcomes and opportunities for students, utilizing all of our resources. Assumptions change since first interim. The reduced COLA, which could lower even further according to some preliminary reports, has a major impact on all districts. But now we adjust to make it work. This is local control, and it is the responsibility we have each year, all while educating students and compensating the people that do so every day. Went the wrong way. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Marking. Do we have any public comments, or?
We do not.
My dear colleagues, I'll say what say you, but Taylor, Mr. Kayata, go ahead.
First of all, I would really like to thank you for that presentation and for the excellent work you and your team have done. And I know that when I say your team and the situation, the budget involves probably every single person working here in Sorna Center as well as at our sites. So really appreciate it, and I know I've said this before, but I am so glad to have you here. The transparency and insight that you offer, the unfiltered opinions that we get as a Board to allow us to make the policy decisions is truly appreciated. I think, you know, that last slide of your presentation really speaks to how much confidence I have in you in this role and how confident I am that with you at the helm, we are going to be able to not have the dire consequences that someone might predict if they were looking at this without context. You provided the context and the clarity about where we are right now, what this actually shows, and that is not foretold. So now I would like to turn to kind of where I would like to go tonight, with that very much in mind, and also with the recognition that I want I did tell you this before, so I'm not trying to take anyone by surprise. At the appropriate time tonight, I will be making a motion that we approve the second interim financial report with a positive certification rather than a qualified certification. The reason that I'm doing this is because I believe objectively that this Board has additional information that supports the positive certification. Education Code Section 42131, which you referenced, states that the Board can make their determination based on our assessment, which may include additional financial information known by the governing board of the school district to exist at the time of each certification. So the my recommendation to my colleagues for a positive certification is not based on something in the future or something in the cloud, something subjective. It's based on what I believe to be the case now. That is not reflected in these financial statements, not due to any failure of the financial statements, but because the Board has information that can't be captured in those financial statements. The primary, there are four things that I believe support a positive certification. The first one is that, as you alluded to, we are a Board and a district in transition right now. We have started making changes that are not yet reflected in our financial statements. We've increased staff costs. We've started hiring for more staff. We're trying to grow our in-district support for our children, which will have many positive impacts. But we also haven't yet transitioned away from all of our contracts. We haven't looked at every area. Essentially, what I'm saying is I think there's a little bit of double counting of when we actually implement this, we're not going to be having all those finances, those impacts. Number two is our other post-employment benefits, prefunding, which our auditor alluded to slightly. Well, he didn't really allude to it, but I will allude to it now. You know, I and I know several other of my colleagues have met with CalPERS about our prefunding of our OPEB benefits, and we are one of the best-funded districts in the state. And that is something good to do, but it's something that we can't reflect in our financial statements, because that's considered essentially a reserve that is untouchable, when that is not in fact the case. If there's a year where we're financially down, we can choose to not spend on OPEB that year. So it's not that we're using that for ongoing expenditures, but rather that we can actually pay for our retired employees' benefits out of that in a particular year, and we don't have to necessarily contribute a given year. So that is going to bring us down in that third year to a lot closer to being in the black. The third one is what's been talked about a little again also is in the previous presentation that we're soliciting a strike waiver, that we have agreement with our union partners, and we're working very closely with the state to get that handled. That's $47 million that will have a dramatic impact on those next three years. And finally, I think this is the most important one, is that because of our willingness to really open our books and be honest as a Board and as a team about where we are, what things cost, and what it means to invest in our community and our students and our staff, we have an unprecedented and a positive relationship with our union partners right now, which means that this might be bad if we didn't think we could work with them to address situations, if it actually turned out to be negative. But that's not where we are right now. We've created strong boundaries, and I think that not acknowledging that actually sends the wrong message for future negotiations, which can take us off of our trajectory of improving the district, which I believe will ultimately increase our ADA and have lower So beep on me. My why, and I think this is important also to say, why do I care about saying that we have a positive certification rather than the qualified certification recommended by staff? Number one is I believe that the entire point of these certifications of our budgets is to tell our community and tell the county and tell others, hey, where are we and where are we going? And I do not believe that a qualified status actually represents where we are as a district. I think that this might send the wrong message to our community, and that's not what we want right now as we're on a regrowth mode. And finally, I believe that if we have a qualified certification that allows the county to have certain tools in place that they may take advantage of, that would be up to them at this stage with a qualified certification. I believe that our relationship with the county, and I'll put this out there because I've kind of said multiple things about SCOE in the past, I welcome their assistance. They have a great team, and I would like their help at all times. We need every hand on deck to make sure that we are having the best numbers possible, and also that, you know, you always need more people when you're working on these finances. With that said, while I would like their assistance, I do not want their judgment, and I do not want their solutions. We, as a local-controlled district who are closest to our community, understand the financial decisions we need to make to invest in our community and reflect our community voices. I believe unfortunately, the County Board of Education has politicized its relationship with SAC City Unified in a way that I believe if they were to increase their involvement with us based on a qualified certification, could have a negative impact on our ability to be both financially successful the third year out in the future, but also to achieve the goals that we've been working very hard on in the past year. So those are my comments. Again, at the appropriate time, I will make that motion. I would urge my colleagues to please consider a positive certification, as I believe that we do have information that supports that within the confines of the ED Code. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Kayata. Anyone else? All right, Ms. Villa.
I will keep my statement short. I've said every time that when I come to this house, when staff brings us recommendations, that I do not sit in your seat every day. I do not do your job. I would never tell you how to do your job. We can ask questions. We can definitely push and have conversations. But I I appreciate when staff is bringing us a recommendation, because I believe it's coming from true information that you guys work so hard on every day. I don't want anybody telling me how to do my job, so I don't want to tell you how to do your job. So I just want to say thank you for this presentation. Thank you for detailing everything. It is very troubling to digest, but I know that you're a creative and very professional, smart individual, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Villa. Mr. Singh.
All right. I think it's possible to to be both. I think we have great staff, and I appreciate you and and the team. And I also think we have assets on our Board, and I really appreciate Board Member Kayata, who brings this amazing lens and kind of puts things together that I necessarily will not say I completely understand. not say I completely understand all the time, but I think you two combined have offered something to think about. But the one piece that stuck with me out of everything that was said is that when I read ed code and I read legalese, I immediately think to the fact that there is something that talks about the fact that if we have information, if we have an understanding of financial information or budgetary understandings, that we can make that, we can push for a positive certification. And I understand that, and I really liked the recap that you provided at the end, I definitely agree that we are headed in a good direction, and I definitely agree that the community has expectations of us, but I also am mindful of what a qualified budget kind of does for the community and can have a negative impact on us as it has in the past, right? Prior to your time coming here and maybe prior to even my tenure on the school board. So I say this with all respect, that I support you, and I really do appreciate the thoughtfulness. And to some level, I also think that we do have an opportunity here to think about the ed code in a way that's creative and allows us to kind of push for more. So, thank you.
All right. I got a simple question. So what's a more solid time for a certification to actually matter if we are, I'm just kind of talking to my colleagues, if we're talking about doing something like pushing for a positive certification based on principle, but not entirely? Would it be, to you, Ms. Marking, would it be more solid if it happened in the second interim, or if it happened in the third interim after we at least know we've gotten the governor's revised budget data? What would be more solid? Because I realize it just happens around and around, but...
So I appreciate all the comments that have been made and the overwhelming support for not only me, but my team. It's so meaningful, and I just want to say thank you, our gratitude for your support. We've put forward our known assumptions at this point. I've made notes from this conversation, and to your point for the third interim, you know, we can look at wrapping some of these things into there. We have to bring you this report actuals as of January 31st by March 15th. That is the statutory requirement, that is the timing confines that we have. The, you know, within the frame of the few short months, the COLA has dramatically shifted, and it's just, again, the timing, we weren't going to take a hammer based upon the shifting COLA, and it's still projected status. So to your point, yes, we're getting more information about what's happening at the state level all the time. We are anticipatory of the May revise. That will give us increased perspective on our assumptions, but again, that is also time-bound. And as I said, preliminary reports are the COLA could be shifting down. I don't want to be too hopeful, but there was a circular that came out today from School Services that said personal income tax, or PIT, is actually above, just slightly, but above what was projected, and so they're now trying to figure out what does that mean for the COLA? And so it's hard to actually answer your question because I wish I had the crystal ball that allowed me to give you a more succinct and accurate number. And unfortunately, again, appreciative of all your support, but I don't have a magic wand, and I don't have a crystal ball.
Right. And I completely and absolutely understand that sometimes magical means that the permissive language of May makes sense, because you're saying it certifies based on current projections that will meet its financial obligations for '24, '25, but may not meet its financial obligations for '25, '26. So to me, it doesn't necessarily sound like we're saying '25, '26 is going to be a problem year. We're very comfortable with being able to make adjustments as long as we're making sure our students are healthy, our staff is healthy, and that our district keeps its nose above water. So a May, as far as I'm concerned, dear colleagues, is pretty good. And that's why I want to make sure that we are comfortable with the diligent work and the hard work that our staff has put in to come to us. May does not mean that we are treading, we're not treading, I don't even know the word for it, skating on thin ice or something to that effect. It doesn't mean that, it means that we are being mindful.
Yes.
And that we are being, you know, not highly concerned, but always aware. So, you know, I always look a different way sometimes when you guys say that. I absolutely, it makes sense. If we could go positive now, and it made sense to go positive now, that would be up to us to decide. But, I mean, it's almost the portrayal of a positive that looks better. So if we're considering, you know, having a positive qualification in attracting people to this district and attracting students to this district, maybe I can understand that if we were going to do it that way. But if it's something that we have to continue to be mindful of and have it presented to us in a manner that we can be responsible with our statements, also knowing that it's not saying that the district shall, it says that we may, that we could play it safe today and maybe reconsider when some other stuff comes around. Of course, if COLA is a hot mess, it's not going to make a difference. But, you know, I do know that whether it is positive or whether it is a qualified is not going to set SCOWI off because we're no longer under their heel, so...
We are not currently a lack-of-going concern.
Correct. And I just want to make sure you guys kind of understand that. We all got to make a point, but I just want to make sure that if we understand that there's still permissive language here, it does not necessarily mean that we are saying that we're going to be in trouble. We're saying that there may be an issue, but we know that we're proactive, and we trust our staff to make sure that we're handling our business. So that's for y'all to consider. I will stop talking and allow Mr. Kayata to come on back.
So I guess my previous comment was more my CPA hat, like to kind of throw my lawyer hat on there and say, rebuttal, please. I just want to make sure that, you know, by the comments I just heard from my colleagues, that my position is fully clear. So what I'm recommending is based on facts as I understand them about our budget situation. It's not the principle, even though the principle is important and the messaging matters, that's not why I'm recommending this. I truly believe that we do have a positive budget certification currently. And in terms of, you know, support for staff, that's not just like, hey, I like you as a person, you're doing great work, keep up the good work. It's kind of a nuanced issue to try to thread that needle, but I guess the way I would say it is, if I was in your role, I would have written a very similar report and made the same recommendation for a qualified budget. I believe that the nuance really is in staff's role and the board's role. And I think that the board has information that we are allowed to consider under the ed code that's not appropriate necessarily for you to consider with your recommendation. So my recommendation isn't in contrast or contradiction to staff's recommendation, it's taking that next step to understand the board's role. I'm going to read a little bit of this ed code, even though this is, I'll try to be quick with it, just so we understand what I'm referring to. So ed code 42131A, it says pursuant to the reports required, okay. The governing board of each school district shall certify in writing within 45 days of the close of the period being reported whether the school district is able to meet its financial obligations for the remainder of the fiscal year and based on current forecasts for the subsequent two fiscal years. These certifications shall be based upon the governing board of the school district's assessment on the basis of standards and criteria for fiscal stability adopted by the state pursuant to, citation, of the school district budget as revised to reflect current information regarding the adopted state budget, school district property tax revenues, and ending balances for the preceding fiscal year. The certification shall be classified as positive, qualified, or negative as prescribed by the superintendent for the purposes, and that's the superintendent of public instruction, for the purposes of determining subsequent actions by said superintendent, the controller, or the county superintendent of schools. These certifications shall be based upon the financial and budgetary reports required by a citation, but may also include, sorry, be clear, but may include additional financial information known by the governing board of the school district to exist at the time of each certification. And it continues, but that last part is what I'm referring to. So that is the same nuance that I'm trying to get at, which is, you know, the first two-thirds of what I just read is what I believe staff have done, and that last fragment of a sentence is what I'm recommending for my positive certification.
Well, that's highly technical and fantastic. And I totally don't understand completely, but I understand your passion, and I know you know what you're talking about, so, but, and I just want to say I appreciate the discourse. So our discussion is never an argument, it's always a talk. So this is why we pop back and forth. So I'm thinking about that. And again, no one's picking on anything you're saying or saying that we don't agree or that you're challenging staff, nobody's saying that. I just want to make sure that sometimes we have to get our views across, and I appreciate that. I also appreciate Ms. Villa, and I'm about to appreciate Ms. Pritchett because she wants to share as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that last comment about saying the facts, and I really appreciate my colleagues' conversations of just trying to protect our district and of how people view us. But I do, I am worried that we're looking at it as we're putting up a veil of how, you know, of people looking in, and that worries me a little bit. And so my question to Janaya is, when you wrote down on here qualified certification, how come you didn't put positive certification instead?
So by definition of ed code 42131, you must have positive cash flow for all three years, and you must be able to meet the reserve for economic uncertainty all three years. And based upon this projection, we have the cash flow element, check, but we don't have the reserve for economic uncertainty in that third year, just based upon the math and assumptions. That's what we think that we can clean up and resolve. To President Phillips' point, it's a may, it's not a shall. But in my role, those are the parameters I'm given, and that's why I made the recommendation, or staff has made the recommendation of a qualified, is because the parameters as defined in ed code put us right there.
So in my experience on the board, if we vote on a positive certification, more than likely, we're going to get a letter from SCOWI that knocks it down to a qualified certification. Is that assumption probably correct?
I think that's a fair speculation. Obviously, I can't speak on behalf of SCOWI, but...
Okay.
They are also going to look at and interpret the ed code from their lens and their perspective. They may concur or disagree.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Pritchett. So, just making sure that I understand this. There's an interpretation of ed code, and it, the qualification isn't necessarily based solely in fact, but fact at a certain time. So you've taken a snapshot, right now, this is where we are. And then Taylor, it sounds like your interpretation is, according to the ed code, we can do a positive certification based on our understanding and what information we have, and if we feel comfortable making that positive. Previously, we had done this, and we made a positive, and then SCOWI came back and said, no, it's not right. So we have a higher authority who's interpreting the education code, saying one thing that aligns with what our CFO is talking about. Like I said, that's why I'm saying that. I just, like, we're obviously going to put it up for a vote, but I think it would be really, really cool for us to have, you know, an understanding that because this is a fact based on projections, isn't really a fact, because at some point, but it's never going to, because it's cyclical, it's never going to be a point in time where that fact is solid. It's always going to be moving, which is why the may, to me, sounds really cool, and why the positive is going to get us information from SCOWI, even though we know we can remedy this and make this right at this point in time, a may makes logical sense to me. But I do appreciate the conversations that we've had this evening, I really do. And this is truly an action item, I believe. And so we're moving out of conference, and now we're moving into action, and Mr. Kayata has made a motion, and I believe your motion is to approve the 23, 24-second interim financial report as a positive certification?
Yes, that's correct.
Can we have a second? Mr. Singh, seconds. Maybe we have a roll call. Student preferential vote, please.
Member Kayata.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Nah.
Member Pritchett.
No.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Singh.
Aye.
Member Villa.
No.
Motion does not pass. It's...
You need four votes to pass.
Thank you. So that motion does not pass. We're moving into more discussion, or we want to pull for a motion, y'all? Any more discussion, though, I want to make sure. We're good? Okay. So a motion came from Ms. Villa and second from Ms. Pritchett? Student preferential vote?
All again abstain.
Or maybe.
Member Kayata.
So the motion is staff's recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. No.
Member Phillips.
Yes.
Member Pritchett.
Yes.
Member Rhodes.
Yes.
Member Singh. Member Villa.
Aye.
That motion passes. Okay. I appreciate the robust conversation. Ms. Marking, we appreciate all your work. This is the last time we're going to see you tonight, right?
You know, we're having such a good time, maybe I'll just stay. No. Thank you so very much for your consideration, your time, your discussion, and most importantly, your support. It is appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on. We're checking the clock. We are unfortunately a little behind, but I really love the good conversation. So we're at 11.3. Early learning and care. Is Dr. Elleva?
Yes.
Okay, Dr. Gibson, let's go.
Hi. Good evening, Madam President, Superintendent Allen, and Board of Trustees. It's an honor to come before you and celebrate that we are a pre-K-12 district, also known as cradle to career. So we want to celebrate that, yeah? My name is Elleva Hughes-Gibson, Assistant Superintendent, so it's an honor to come before you to share an update on how we're doing as a district. As we know, we have a lot of work to do, and we have an opportunity to close the opportunity gap and the achievement gap at the youngest level, yes? And so here we are to talk about how might we interrupt inequities. So thinking about our mission and vision and moving into and beyond Generation Alpha, can you believe that? We're about to go into another generation that's entering our system. So we have a vision and a mission. We provide high-quality, early educational experiences and equitable support to ensure school readiness and the whole child development. Our vision is that every student will receive high-quality educational experiences that spark curiosity, foster creativity, build literacy, promote a growth mindset of how might we be able to, right? And strengthen relationships in order to thrive in life and contribute to the world. So tonight, just wanted to go over is, what is early learning so that we have a shared understanding and definition and language? Who do we serve? And whole child assessment that we use, and so a little bit of data? What we mean by P3 alignment efforts and next steps? So what is early learning? Well, our state, California Department of Education, talks about that we are taking a stand to really define that early learning starts with our children at zero to three, and it doesn't stop there, it actually goes to the age of eight years old. So what you see before you is the continuum from zero to eight years old. Early learning with our infant toddlers, zero to three, pre-K, which is typically our three-year-olds and four-year-olds, our wonderful transitional kindergarten, and now you see it all overlap as a part of the whole universal pre-K initiative, to then go into kindergarten in the third grade. So when we say early learning, we really mean zero to eight. To support that, here's a little bit of research from Harvard University, which basically just talks about that the brain grows rapidly between zero to eight, and that as children are having these interactions with adults and having these opportunities to tap into their curiosity and hands-on learning, that it doesn't take much, they're picking it up. And then you notice that the older we get, it takes more effort. So we have a great opportunity to work with our youngest learners. This is all... This is also some research that I wanted us to just kind of call out is that in the state of California, based on the CDE and Ed Source Analysis, um, in 2019, 48.5 of our third graders met or exceeded standards in English Language Arts in California. So what about the other percentage? Also from the KC Foundation, they mentioned that students who don't, um, read proficiently by third grade typically are four times more likely not to graduate, um, from high school with a diploma. There's other research that talks about that there's a word gap. So even if children are in preschool or pre-K as we, if you will, um, that exposure to language and print-rich environments is very important. So when we think about the socioeconomic background, as you can see here, dependent upon, um, the circumstances, that a child may only get 616 words, um, exposure. If they are, um, a part of a family that is, is considered working class, maybe a thousand 251. And if they're from a professional family, um, if you will, um, a child may be exposed to 2,153 words. And so that informs us to say, how are our classrooms set up to provide print-rich environments, exposure to language? And guess what? Words are free. Words are free. The other piece is children who attended state pre-kindergarten programs have statistically significant and meaningful gains. And so us being a pre-K-12 cradle to career district, we have this wonderful opportunity to build a strong foundation for our earliest learners so that as they matriculate through our district, they will all be graduating college and career readiness. So that means readiness starts at the lowest level with our youngest learners. How does this inform our schools? Well, we have this term called developmentally informed or developmentally appropriate practices because we believe that all children, they grow, grow and learn at different paces and, and what have you. And so we want to make sure that we strengthen our tool belts around how might we differentiate the learning experiences and the instruction in the classroom and make sure that it's developmentally appropriate. Here is just a QR code if you're interested. It takes you to the Help Me Grow so that you can kind of see what the developmental milestones are for children when they, um, grow from zero on up to, um, teen years. Who do we serve? So for early learning and care in particular, we have the honor of supporting our district. We're providing options for our families. Um, through SETA, we have early Head Start, um, as well as, uh, from the child, um, excuse me, the California Department of Social Services where we provide, um, uh, childcare. So with that being said, this helps, um, to support and provide services for children ages zero to three years old. We also have state and federal preschool, so that's Head Start and state preschool that serves our three, three-year-olds and four-year-olds. And we have different options, um, some that are, uh, Monday through Friday, year-round, and then some that align to the school day, which is Monday through Friday school term. We also have options for our children who are five to 11 years old through, um, a subsidized program over at MLK. And then we also have fee-based programs at, um, LDV and Matsuyama. And we have parent participation preschool, which you know that is actually, um, through our parents and providing those opportunities to get involved in their children's learning. And last but not least, this year, first five playgroups. So look at this. Let's celebrate this. We have pre-K sites and TK sites all throughout Sacramento City Unified School District. And what you can see here to the left is our pre-K sites. We, we want to always honor the pioneers who were the original early kindergarten, um, leaders who opened up early kindergarten. And then we termed it as transitional kindergarten in 22, uh, 2022 to now. And so as we move into next year, we're opening up, hopefully before next year, American Legion and Elder Creek with infant toddler classes, CB wire for pre-K, and then you see the new, um, six sites for TK. This is our demographics just aligning to our district and how we identify the various, um, groups that we serve. And so you can see what that looks like in our pre-kindergarten by race and ethnicity. And so now we'll look at a little bit of assessment because yes, we have assessments with the youngest learners. And as we think about alignment, how might that assessment data be used, right, to inform the receiving teachers as children, um, grow within our district? What we use is a Desire Results Developmental Profile, which basically assesses the whole child and is aligned to the early learning foundations. And what you see there is fall and winter, um, uh, uh, reports. And it measures, uh, self-regulation, social emotional development, language and literacy development, cognit, the cognition when it comes to math and science and physical development. So typically the way this assessment is administered is that a teacher sits down with a child, um, and, and also observes the child as the child is, um, exploring in the classroom and they're constantly taking data, observational notes, and then they score the child on a continuum to see if they're at exploring or building and what have you. You will see a lot of green up there because it's showing you, um, that children are, are progressing. The reason why you're seeing a lot of yellow is because we have three-year-olds in our pre-K classrooms. So they have a little bit more time to develop. Also, what is exciting about when you have your youngest learners is that the families are more involved. So we have the opportunity to not only build a foundation for the youngest learners, but also to support families as they navigate through the system and to be involved in school at the, the, um, earlier grades. So here are some DRDP parent surveys. As you can see, the majority are very satisfied with our programs. And then, um, as a department, we like to do internal audits and self-assessments. So we have our own family survey and as you can see here, um, when we think about a welcoming environment, because we are the, um, the first experience that families and children have into our district, so we want to make sure that we're looking at a welcoming environment. And so, um, here's a quote from some families. They said, uh, "School staff, uh, seek my input to better understand my child and family." So 83.9% said, yes, excellent, very good, they agree. Um, there's things about effective communication. School staff communicate with me, um, in my preferred language, using words that are easy to understand. 84% excellent and very good. And then when it comes to student learning during conferences, right? Teachers and I exchange valuable information about my child's strengths and challenges. 83.9%, excellent and very good. And there's a couple of comments there, but we just wanted to highlight that for you to let you know that we're doing our due diligence to welcome families into our school system so that they have the confidence and the relationships and then they, um, move on through the upper grades. P3 alignment. So I'm just going to go over a couple of efforts that we're doing around, uh, alignment of our systems. We know that leadership matters. So as our principals who may not necessarily have an early childhood education background, we want to support them with that. And some of them actually do. And so this gives them permission to really to pay attention to their youngest learners. So what we do is we gather the principals once a month and we talk about them leading the learning around early childhood development, learning environments, developmentally appropriate practices, and early literacy. And it's evolving into a community of practice. And what you see there are a couple of pictures of, uh, our wonderful principals talking about their pre-K, TK and kindergarten classrooms. Here, we're extending the conversation to go to the sites and where teachers are coming together. So if you see to the left, um, giving a shout out to Woodbine where we have pre-K, TK and K, um, teachers coming together to talk about vertical alignment. And what we mean by that is alignment between learning foundations and content standards, assessments, curriculum and instruction practices, interventions and supports. And then once again, the classroom being that third teacher, right? Because the way we set up the conditions in the classroom supports the learning as well. Now this one's really exciting and we can really pave the way for the rest of the county and the state. So in partnership with the California's, um, State University Sacramento, uh, we are trying to do and working on the possibility of P3, which pre-K to third grade demonstration sites. And the idea is that we want as a district to ride this wave of P3 alignment and be the example. So this is an exciting, exciting, exciting endeavor. Um, I believe, uh, Assembly Member McCarty is identifying funds to help us with this endeavor. And this is also a pipeline with, um, Sac State into our schools. So this is really helping with the workforce. Also with our labor partners, a shout out to SETA, who is a part of us in, in shaping this and also coming up with a selection, a selection committee and application process. So this is a really exciting, um, endeavor that we're taking on as a district. And here we are, infant toddler. So to promote that cradle to career pathway, this baby right here is so interested, right, in books. And so what we want to do is really celebrate that we can get our children as young as zero to three years old. We're going to have an infant class at American Legion. We're going to have a toddler class at Elder Creek and we're going to provide comprehensive services around education, health, family engagement and home visits. All of this is funded through Early Head Start and the California Department of Social Services. It will be regulated by Title 22 licensing, just like our pre-K classrooms. And of course, we are, um, held account, by accountability standards such as the EHS performance standards. And then once again, as we are the ones that help to welcome families and children to our district, we really want to promote authentic family engagement. So not only do we have you all as our wonderful Board of Trustees, we also have a policy council because of Head Start funds. And what you see here is a picture of our parents, right, all across our district who are also doing what you do to hold us accountable, to look at our enrollment, to look at, you know, various initiatives and that they help us to make decisions around our budget and policy. So once again, really supporting families as they, right, gain the skills and confidence to be more involved in their children's lives, um, when it comes to education. We also have family partnership agreements to support families around their own goals. So let's say there's a family that wants to, you know, buy a house one day or is interested in a, a particular job. Not only do we support the child, but through Head Start, we support the family. And that's exciting and such an honor for us to be able to do that as a district. And then we also do parent workshops and cafes. Oh, okay. And so partnerships, just want to honor the partnerships here. And so what you see here is us going out into the community. The whole department said we're going to shut down for a minute to really got, get out in the community so we can get those resources for families. So we just want to, um, recognize, uh, various organizations there as well as, uh, SETA, uh, Sac State, SCOWE, West Ed, uh, the Center of District Innovation and Leadership, um, in early education and, um, Metaview, Berth and Beyond, and, uh, a few other community organizations. And so when it comes to next steps, of course, you know that pre-K and TK, well TK now, but, um, anything before first grade is not compulsory education. And so when we talk about the importance of coming to school and attendance and all that, we have the opportunity to help families with understanding that so then by the time they get, right, to the older grades, they'll have a strong foundation, um, to really bring their children to school to help us with our attendance. Also, it's a strategy for up and up of, of increasing our enrollment. So if we're starting with infant and toddler and pre-K and TK, right, um, it helps with enrollment in our elementary and beyond. Also, we want to continue with to promote P3 alignment, cradle to career across the system at all levels. So hopefully today you will hear us say, pre-K-12. Also, we want to improve and strengthen family and community partnerships and improve outcomes for children and families as measured by quantitative and qualitative impact data such as assessments, ongoing feedback, feedback and the like. So once again, I thank you for this opportunity to come before you. We are excited about this work. And just a few quotes here. "Early childhood education is the key to the betterment of society." So what's bigger than us, right? We're touching the future. Um, that's by Maria Montessori. "And there can be no keener revelation of a society's soul than the way in which we treat its children." Nelson Mandela. Thank you.
I thank you kindly. That's a fabulous presentation. Have to look at my paper to make sure I know where I am. Sorry. Um, do we have any public comment, sir?
We, we do have one speaker, Terrence Gladney.
Aha. Mr. Gladney, your, your mic, sir.
Oh, hi.
No, I mean, the first time I met, uh, Dr. Gibson, I was actually meeting with one of her, uh, staff and the energy that she has here tonight, um, is just who she is and she's just a beautiful soul. And, um, I feel really honored to have met her and crossed paths with her. Like she didn't even know me, but she, I was just in her space, in her staff space and she offered me a cupcake and I'm like, whose birthday is it? She's like, I just got cupcakes because I don't even remember what day it was. But she just loves her staff, her staff love her. Um, and, and we're really fortunate to have her truly looking out for our babies. Um, but I didn't want her to come up here and not let her know that she's supported obviously in what she does, but I am a Head Start baby. Uh, my mom was a single mom and, you know, she put me in that system and it allowed me to really honestly get a Head Start in my, in my, in my scholastic career. Um, I was a very young parent. I had my, my oldest son at 18. We put him through the parent participation preschool. Um, you know, by definition, by history, I should have been a statistic. My son should have been a statistic, um, because of programs like this, Head Start and the, and the parent participation program. Um, you know, I was able to be surrounded by like-minded students that had parents that loved on them, but it was a community of parents in the same way that as a very young parent, I had other parents that I could lean upon and it was a bunch of young black males or black babies in that space that have grown to be successful. And it's through this work and historically in this district, what we've done is start our cutting at the roots of the tree and we need to reverse that trend and maybe we need to prune a little bit further off of, off of the, off the roots and, and allow those babies to actually nurture and see what they can become before we start, you know, counting them as dead. Um, so we know what the, uh, school to prison pipeline is and it starts when our babies are young. So let's stop allowing the prison system and, and horrific outcomes for our babies to be projected by not investing them at that stage. Let's, let's, let's combat that by really forcing literacy upon our students, um, you know, before third grade. Um, let that, you know, be what exists and how we, you know, how we operate in every document, whether it's LCAP or our school site plans and speak to what we know to be true to reverse these trends. So thank you, Dr. Gibson. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gladney. Um, any, uh, board conversation? Oh, buttons lighting up. We're going to share tonight, aren't we? Ms. Pritchett, let's go.
I just want to say thank you for that presentation and that upbeat, upbeat personality. And I'm right there with you, Terrence. I, um, you know, my, my, I was a very young mother and my son went to a Head Start program out over on CB Circle, um, when I was a single young mom. And, um, and then later when I had my daughter, um, she was in parent participation preschool and so I know firsthand the importance of these type of programs. So just thank you to you and your staff that are putting, that are making this happen for our young ones and for our parents that are learning to navigate through these systems. So I just wanted to say thank you. Keep with the good work.
Thank you. Ms. Segura?
Completely just props to you and the presentation. It was so incredible and incredibly informative. Everything that the program is doing is so well thought out and cared for and I just really appreciate being able to hear from you and learn more about that.
Thank you. Mr. Singh?
I just want to say, um, that my first interaction, our first site visit, I think, was, uh, with Ms. Toby over at, um, Tahoe Elementary. So shout out to Ms. Toby. And, um, I just saw the impact. It was actually really interesting because it was, the parent participation program is really important to me because it was actually a lot of young parents and part of it is just trying to figure out how to be a parent and how to be in a room and interacting with other folks and especially post-pandemic, um, it was a really important place for folks to come together and kind of learn how to parent or how to interact with other people's children as well. Cause you're trying to teach your own child, but also trying to see how your child interacts with others and how you interact in those spaces. And I think it's really important because when you look at the ecosystem of that space, you're actually interacting with other human beings who come from different backgrounds, different spaces. And I think that really encompasses the entire idea of being in school and being in these spaces, especially a public school system, which is so diverse. So, um, I appreciate this, but I also really appreciate the fact that we have multiple opportunities for parents because that's really important. Um, I know constantly we're talking about our after-school programs and other, other things that we can provide. And I think one way, especially when you think about everything is tied to enrollment and getting more folks to attend public school. And I think last week was like Public School Awareness Week or something. I, I missed it, but, uh, someone posted it. Part of this is us being able to talk about what we offer. Um, oftentimes people choose to leave the public school system because they think that the private school system offers more daycare options, offers more opportunities for their child to learn at an earlier age. That's not necessarily true. We just need to do better of telling folks that we have the resources and opportunities. We just need to do better of telling folks that we have the resources and opportunities and doing a better job educating those early parents. So thank you for everything you do.
Thank you. And this was an information item, but I truly appreciate this. As a former Head Start teacher, this is a science, and the more we hone in, I mean, you can walk into any class, and each one of these classes is going to be wherever you go, that second grade class is going to be that way, that PK, everything's going to be not near identical, but, but like manufactured in a way that you know you're going to get the results. So I really look forward to hearing more and maybe coming out and doing a site visit when we show up over at my high school over there. So I'm very excited, and I thank you kindly, Dr. Gibson. And we are done with that one, so.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here, ma'am. Communications. It's going to be fast, right, y'all? Superintendent's report. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. President Phillips. In honor of Women's History Month, and in that spirit, I would like to begin my remarks tonight by congratulating the McClatchy Girls Basketball Team, yes, on their historic upset and incredible run in the CIF NorCal Regional Tournament. Our CKM Lions were the 16th seed in the tournament and had to travel to the Bay Area to play six-time state champion Pinewood School. Our Lions were not deterred by this challenge and came home with an incredible upset victory. Two days later, the Lions followed it up with another huge victory win over Whitney High School in Rockland. Although their amazing run ended this past Saturday, I want to convey my pride in our student athletes and my appreciation for their hard work. I'd also like to thank CKM for hosting the Sac City Unified All-City Music Choir Music Concert in their beautiful and historic auditorium on Leap Day. I had the pleasure of attending this concert that included performances by our band, orchestra, and choir students. This event was offered free to our community so they could enjoy this family-friendly entertainment by our talented students. It was raining that day, raining, raining, and the auditorium was packed with parents and families and grandparents. And so I want to thank the teachers and staff who worked to make this night possible. It was incredible. And also, on February 29th, I'm happy to report that the CERNAS Center, as Ms. Malewski said, was very crowded for our hiring event. And so I too would like to thank Dr. Tiffany Smith Simmons and the HR team for working to fill, yes, the teacher positions. They also worked to fill a large number of nutrition services positions and substitute custodian positions, so thank you. And also, thank you to our communications team for their work in promoting the hiring event and working to get the news coverage out that day that helped bring in more applicants to our community. And last, last Friday evening, I had the opportunity to be in attendance at the California School Public Relations Association Conference in downtown Sacramento to see the members of our communications team be honored for their excellent work. Yes, our district was the recipient of two Calspur Awards of Excellence that night for their efforts to highlight our new school construction projects and our high school manufacturing tours that are run by our wonderful CTE department. Also that night, our Chief Communications Officer, Mr. Brian Heap, received the Calspur Rising Star Award that recognizes, recognizes an emerging leader in the school communications profession. So thank you and congratulations, Brian, and the communications team for your work to elevate all the positive things that are happening in our schools. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. No president's report this evening. Student member report?
At the last SAC meeting, I believe, we had the pleasure of having Mr. Kayata in the space, which was a super important and very beneficial aspect for us. We got a lot of great insight for our initiatives, and we're really excited moving forward to have more of you in the space. We've gotten notifications of a lot of you guys signing up for dates, which we're super stoked about. And if you have any questions about those upcoming things, you can shoot Vane an email or you can shoot me an email, more than happy to answer them. That is all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Segura. Ms. Villa?
Just two quick items. One, we have our Community Fair at Suyu Elementary this Saturday, and that is from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. They're going to have some pretty cool things. I think we have it over here. Meals, bike repair, student performances. We're going to have actually a next-level pro wrestling match, so that is a highlight. But that is on 603236 Avenue, 10 to 1, Suyu Elementary. It's free. And then I just wanted to say thank you to Tahoe Park Elementary and Bowling Green. We were invited to their Read-a-thon, and we were able to read to a bunch of first graders and second graders, and it was a lot of fun, very entertaining. So I just wanted to say thank you to the teachers and staff who allowed us to come on campus and visit their schools.
Thank you, Ms. Villa. Mr. Singh, today's sports news.
Okay, I'm laughing. I'm going to try to get my thoughts. My thoughts, okay. We have a spelling bee. Those are my thoughts. So, Terrence, thank you for reminding me, but we have a spelling, regional spelling bee competition. It'll be at JFK on Saturday, so please come through. I know we have a, what's that? Saturday the 16th. I hear Member Kayata is judging, so that's awesome. I believe they give us a list and how to spell it out, so you'll be, we'll all be good. And I also know that we have a student from Phoebe Hurst who will be participating and a student from John Cabrillo. Is that correct? So come through. I think spelling bees are awesome. I can't win one, but I really look forward to seeing these kids spell things out. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Kayata?
So first, just a brief statement for County Superintendent Dave Gordon and our elected Sac County Board members. I think you saw a robust conversation tonight about a board and a staff that has positive intentions for our district. I know that now that we have certified with a qualified budget, there are steps you can take to exert some oversight over us, and I would please ask that you keep the politics out of this and respect the work that we are doing to build one of the best districts in the state right here in Sacramento. We would like your assistance, but we do not want your judgment or your solutions. And on a positive note, on the 16th, which is, I think, almost two weeks ago now, or, yeah, I had the privilege of attending No Child eats alone day, which I was able to work with Supervisor Patrick Kennedy and the school site to put together and to bring to that middle school, which serves kids in my area and is part of my area. It was amazing. They had the kids out there, kind of learning activities to get to know their peers. In middle school in particular, you come from different elementary schools, feeder schools, some you come from outside the area. It can be hard to make friends. Middle school can be really hard for people, so that was really an uplifting event that we were able to take part in. And thank you to Centene, AKA Health Net, for sponsoring that. Let's see. Also, I would like to thank Member Segura for the opportunity to attend the Student Advisory Council. You know, yeah, I would encourage my colleagues to go. I learned a lot. I think, well, we talked about a few things, but something that stuck with me is that the previous board meeting, we had a presentation on identifying untapped students and how we were supporting them, and we kind of had that same presentation come back to the students, and the conversation was so different, and that's what's so great about the student involvement and the committee and having a student board member is the different approach to it. You know, you said that I offered some input, but I learned a lot from you all, so I really appreciate it. And again, everyone else should definitely make it a priority to go. Like Member Villa said, I appreciated the opportunity. I was invited to Bowling Green to go read to some students. I read to four classes, read a couple of short books, one very long book and a couple of medium books, and it was great. You know, in every single one of the four classes, the kids had no idea what a school board member is, but I hope that their parents know that we are here to serve them and their community, and if they have any needs, they should reach out to us. So I hope at least, you know, about 100 kids I touched that day took that message home to their parents and their communities. Tomorrow, I will be at the School of Engineering and Sciences to, I was invited to two things. I don't know, Jen, if you're going, but they're doing a wind unit where they're completing their test wind turbines to see which one's the fastest and has the best functionality. Really amazing things coming out of the School of Engineering and Sciences, and really glad to have that as part of our school district. Really uplifting kind of some of our smaller schools, the great things they can do. Looking forward to, and no one has mentioned it yet, actually, even though we have all this swag here, to the Community Fair at Suyu on Saturday. Looking forward to going out there. Oh, did she? Oh, sorry. Okay.
That's why I'm like this.
You know, you're saying that, now that I remember you said it.
He was distracting you.
He was distracting me with the mask.
No, it's the wrestling.
But anyway, I'm looking forward, I'm looking forward to being out there and seeing everyone, and also looking forward to the spelling bee. Thank you. And thank you, Terrence, for your advocacy in this area. That's it.
Thank you all for sharing, members. Moving on to Consent Agenda. Yes, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Rhodes. I do that, I did that all the time to you, so my bad. I should have watched.
I just wanted to say, just in case anybody was wondering why I put on the masks, is because of the wrestling. I wasn't just putting on a mask for any reason. We have a whole wrestling show, so I think that'll be great for all our board members to wear a mask like I did. You guys don't have to, but I'm going to put on a mask again because I'm excited about the wrestling, and everybody should come out and join us to wrestle and have a good time. Thank you, guys.
So this mask is more reflective of like the Nacho Libre kind of thing, right?
Yeah, and then, and then it's also our mascot.
Okay, okay. I'll consider it. Thank you.
Yeah. Nobody's going to do it? Okay. That's cool. It's okay, guys.
Yeah, we're good. All right, so moving on, Consent Agenda. I do appreciate the camaraderie here. So Consent Agenda, we got any public, public comment, sir? Come on, I'm following it.
We do not.
Okay, thank you. And I believe I heard a motion by Ms. Pritchett, and there was no one pulling any, there was no one pulling anything off of Consent Agenda today, correct? We have to honor all of our members. Just want to make sure. The mask is upsetting, but it's okay. So Ms. Pritchett has called for a motion, and a second is from Ms. Villa, student preferential vote.
Aye. Member Kayata?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Members, oh my goodness. Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
That, that passes. Consent Agenda is on its way. And so Item 14, Business and Financial Information Reports, I have received that information. I'll be doing lots of signatures in a moment. Slowly and confidently, I will read the future board meetings and dates, locations, for those who want to write it down. I will always read it slowly. March 21, 2024, 5:00 p.m., closed session, 6:30 p.m. at your CERNAS Center. April 4, 2024, 5:00 p.m. is closed session, and 6:30 p.m. is open session here at your CERNAS Center. Item 16. Mr. Singh moves. Ms. Pritchett seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you kindly. We will have a good evening. This meeting is closed.